Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The January 30th special meeting of the board for the purpose of strategic planning is now called to order. Please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would ask you to motion to approve the agenda.
Go on.
One second. Please vote. Four ayes. I remember when is not yet. We have several individuals that would like to address us. We will begin with Carrie Newt.
Shall I just come through the front?
Sure. Then it would be whoever else wants to speak if you wouldn't mind.
I'll stay out of the light. I just want to quickly say something. First of all, I wish a lot of, you know, good insight to the boards for the year planning and strategic thinking. I know some board members really have been asking about strategic planning, so this is the opportunity to do these things. I just want to give my two cents. I think there's three elements that are very important. One is the finances. And I think as a board, you're responsible for the finances. And strategic means you have to monitor the finances and, if necessary, steer the finances. The second one is academic results. And I think that's something that we really need to focus on. And I hope actually in this meeting, majority of the time, will be spent on academics. Because that's what's really important, especially during these hard times where we have to make budget cuts. You know, right now in the plan, it's, you know, we have to get rid of some teachers. And that's something that's not desirable. And so I think that is very important to talk about. Third one is employees satisfaction. We also need happy employees, you know? You can't have a district with these two pillars, in my view. Lastly, I do want to say one thing about the fact that Newark has just as much real estate as New Haven. But the difference is, New Haven is twice as big as Newark. So something needs to be thought out there. And I would urge the board to make proper decisions, what to do with surplus real estate. And that means that you have to really think of the kids. City interests and board interests have a lot of overlap. But there are also differences. And as a board member on the school board, I think your primary responsibility is to take care of the school. So if then you have to go against city interest, you should do it. And, you know, personal aspirations or knowing people, I think your job is to take care of you and Unify. And that's the first part of the question.
Thank you. Ms. Bart? And I'll time you on my watch because we don't...
Oh, you have timers?
Okay.
Hi, I just wanted to say that I am very discouraged with the fact that there's no accompanying documents with this. That in full disclosure, so transparency for the community of knowing exactly what strategic planning, implementation, and progress monitoring mean. There's nothing that gives insight. I can't believe how many people in the community have asked me what this means. I think that it's not very transparent. And I think that your last strategic plan, that you partnered with the city to develop, there was so much volume from the community, from just the residents, from the city themselves, from the businesses. And I think that this is very short sighted to be conducting this type of business without having any type of disclosure to the community, what you are going to be discussing this evening.
Tracy Wyndham?
Hi. It's my first time speaking at a meeting, but there's a lot of things that have come to my attention lately that are super concerning. This is only my son's second year in public school. He came from a private school, so there's a lot of things that are really alarming to me. One of them was, I went to the meeting last, a couple weeks ago, actually, just a few weeks ago. And there was an agenda item about somebody here on the board getting a raise. And a bunch of people came, and then it was taken off. And it just seemed so sneaky, from my perspective. It seemed really underhanded, and it didn't feel transparent at all. It was said that it was a bad time. I believe Mr. Sanchez, you were like, "Yeah, it's a bad time. It's not something we're going to move forward with." But I wanted more clarity around that. Is it something that is not going to be discussed again? Is it permanently being taken off? Or is it going to try to be introduced at one of these meetings that nobody knows about? Because that's really like, I'm just getting this vibe of everything just not being very transparent. Another thing that I wanted to talk about was this meeting right here. It was like, the transparency about where it was posted, or how people come to know about it, it doesn't feel very straightforward either. So for me, somebody who's new, seeing that the last meeting I was at felt kind of sneaky, and, you know, that was my vibe from it. And then all of a sudden, there's a new meeting that doesn't have really, hasn't been announced properly, I would say, to the community. It just feels like, whoa, what's going on? So I'm just here to ask for more transparency, more communication with the public, the people that live around here, that should know what's going on in your meetings, that want to be a part of it, and that have valid input. So another thing was, is that raise going to be discussed again anytime soon? Is it something that, as a community, we need to be worried about, just being passed because we're not there? Or is it just permanently being taken off? And then another thing that I had noticed was, the school calendar for next year is not available yet. And I know how strict we are with, you know, making sure our children don't have absence or incident work. We're planning for certain things. But I feel like, if you don't give them a calendar to let them know when they can plan their vacations, then being so stringent on the times that they take off, you can't have your cake and eat it too. You need to be planning far more in advance and be far more communicative with them. But that's all. Thank you.
Next, I would turn it over to the superintendent to invite our guests and set the stage for the workshop.
Thank you. And I certainly, first of all, want to start from why we're meeting here. And I think that that's the question I got today. Really, I want you guys to look at this space. This is potentially space that we could easily transition central office to without having to build anything new. The trailers that district office is in right now are not in great shape. There's a lot of dry rot, there's a lot of things going on, and there's space here that can be utilized, and we already own it. I know that that would create something really to do with that property, and that's to be determined relative to strategic planning. But I would invite you all to take a look around while you're here, and look at the other offices and look at the space that's here. It's something we own. It has HVAC that works, it has paint on it. It's not ostentatious, and it is something that could be easily to force a transition to move central office someplace like this. And this is an ongoing discussion among me and the board for a while. But I thought just getting a feel for it without everything in here, it does feel different. It feels bigger, and I wanted to just put that out there. But that's to be seen still. We'll be working on that with your input. But I think it's also a good idea, as the board mentioned, to start having board meetings out in the community more often. I know that's something we're all considering. And maybe having specifically workshops out in schools and business at the district office when we have a regular meeting. And I know we're talking about some of those structures here tonight, so I won't get into that. But I do want to introduce Aida with CCEE, and Socorro Shields with CCEE, and Jeff Dack with CCEE. I'll let them each kind of introduce themselves a little bit more and what they're doing here. But I thought it would be good to start before they, you know, let the board and cabinet introduce themselves quickly, and then let them take you somewhere. All of you, sorry.
Hi, I'm Dr. Ali Wong, I'm the Assistant Superintendent of the Board.
Hi, Francisco Prisciano.
And Vice President.
I'm Nancy Thomas, I'm the Board President this year.
I'm Jan Cracker, Member of the Board.
Major Richards, Board Member.
I'm the Associate Superintendent at District.
Char, Canoe, Executive Assistant to Mr. Sanchez in the Board of Education.
Right, Richards, I'm the Chief Business Officer for the District.
And CCEE has agreed to facilitate this process for us this evening. We're glad to have them. And the price is right, because there's no cost to us. But I'll let you explain how that works, and whoever wants to start taking...
So my name is Aida Molina, and I am the Director of Education for CCEE. And thank you for letting me be here today. We're very excited.
I'm sorry, could you... Who is CCEE?
Who is CCEE? Thank you. Great question. California Collaborative for Educational Excellence. We are a very small, flat, nimble agency, state agency, born from a local control funding formula. And we are going to talk now about specifically who we are, what we do, and what we say, and a little bit further. This is our second opportunity to be here. We have presented to the board before. And obviously, we'll talk a little bit more about what we do and what we do.
I'm Socorro Shield, also with CCEE. And as Aida mentioned, we've been working with Newark for the past year. We appreciate the time that it was taking you all together to share kind of what we've been doing here the past year, together and kind of facilitating conversations around particularly continuing improvement at the state. Because really, it took more work, continuous improvement, that to file for schools and districts to get better, and how can you situate and make sense of that here in your own local context and what it can be.
Speaking of dropping, I'm a veteran creating an average for CCEE. I'm also, I also work at school boards, also now in county, about 30 minutes from here. And I currently serve as the Board President there. I'm in my eighth year on the board. And I apologize in advance, I have a very sick wife and a sick kid, and another kid who's not sick. But I can't stay through the entire meeting as much as I intended to, because I have to get back and put them to sleep. Because my wife, I can't do that right then. So I apologize, just have to exit early.
So we are going to begin the... The next...
So today, we're going to set the stage with some more discussion about who we are as the CCEE, what our partnership has looked like, what our framework and intention is in working with districts across the state. We'll talk about continuous improvement, how we've made sense of it, how the state is making sense of it. Ultimately, how you make sense of it right here in Newark. And then really get to what does it look like? What do you need to be successful governing during this time? What does that look like for you? What are the things you need? And talk about next steps in moving forward. One of the things Aida said, and the way, when normally with this our format as a board workshop, part of it is really to have deeper conversations and speak more and have discussions openly and freely about these topics that matter. And part of it, since we're new with you, what we love is to go around the table, and everybody share quickly kind of one word that describes them and why. Just to kind of orient ourselves for the evening, and to begin to really get to know one another about this work. So if we could take about two minutes, maybe one minute, to think about one word? If you're feeling very...
About yourself personally?
About yourself. One word that you think really describes you.
How about two?
Well, I'm going to kind of just take a call.
Are we on a timer?
If you want to look me in the eye when you're ready, I'm going to kind of send. If you're avoiding me, I know you're still thinking.
Motivated.
And why would you say that?
You said that today one more.
There's a big why, too. We want to get to know you, Ray. One word and the why, that's important as well.
I just feel that my personality, for the 40-plus years that I've been a doer, and then 21 years of a school board, is I'm motivated to try to do my best to make sure that our kids get an excellent education. It's what we're going through, you know, with the budget cuts, that's, you know, very difficult. Especially having kids or grandkids in the system, and having kids gone through the system. I, what's the term that they say? I believe, you know, blue and gold. I, as far as I'm concerned, Newark is second to none. But it is frustrating when potentially we're going to lose excellent teachers, counselors, because of the budget cuts, and administrators, whatever. But it's something that I feel is short-term, and eventually we'll right the ship and get back going in the right direction. I appreciate Mr. Newt for filming our meeting tonight. I am frustrated that we don't have something to give to the people that are here. So maybe, I'm sure you have brochures. I don't know if we're, are they on the website? Okay. And maybe we can get some brochures and...
Sure.
To Charlene, and anybody can come in, and we can hand them out at the next meeting. But I'm happy that we have the partnership with CCEE, and I'm looking forward, and I'm glad that it's free. And hopefully, you can be part of what's good for us and moving us forward. Getting rid of teachers, in my opinion, is not a good term. It's frustrating that we're going to lose, you know, some teachers. And hopefully, you know, we can find a way to eventually bring them back. I think everybody wants what's best for their children. To me, the kids of Newark, they're all mine. I'll do my best to help us get through these, you know, hard times.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Or more? Who's next? Since we'll go through everybody.
I'll take it. There's a couple words I was thinking, but I think probably concerns is the thing. Like Ray, I've been in Newark since I'm a little bit longer. My kids went through the system, I'm a teacher, my husband's a teacher. So education has been a big part of my life. And it is my personal belief that public education is the salvation of our country. And without, our country will not function. And so if we do not have, if we do not raise our kids in ways that are civically responsible, we're going to have problems as a country. And so that is my concern. I'm concerned about the fact that we're underfunded. I'm concerned about the fact that teachers are not appreciated the way they need to be. As a teacher, I see that from a different perspective than a lot of people would say. I'm concerned about money. I'm concerned about being in debt. Personally, I'm not in debt, and I don't think our government should be either. And so I think that we have to live within our budget. And that means we have to realize how we spend the money, and be concerned, but be strong about the cuts we're going to make.
Great, thank you. If anyone wants to go next.
Okay. Did you use the word hopeful?
I'm always...
Motivated. Okay. Okay. Because my word is hopeful. I'm hopeful that we can overcome some of the concerns that Jan mentioned. That we can put our thoughts together in such a way that we move forward in a coherent way, that we become more strategic and analytical in the way we do our work, in the way we manage the district. Staff manages the district the way we oversee and set direction for staff. I'm hopeful that we can get beyond some of the issues that are plaguing our community around our schools, the fact that we will be probably losing teachers, that we want to continue to be a place where students want to come. And we don't want that undermined by the thought that, you know, our classrooms are too big, and crowded, and we don't have as many offerings as we might if we were fully funded as we should be.
I was just wanting to say, so I'm between thoughtful and purposeful. And I don't know, some of the words are not the same, so I'll try and narrow down. But from my perspective, I really think we need to, which is one of the reasons why I've been pushing to have this discussion in terms of thinking strategically of like, what is the big picture goal that we all align with? And how are we moving with that? How are we communicating that? How can we use our time here with the board to be able to really drive initiatives and think how to have a long-lasting impact for our students, for our kids? And be able to really emphasize, emphasize that we want to ensure that Newark is a top-tier district.
Great, thank you so much for sharing. Just a little bit more about CCEE. So actually, based on some of the comments, maybe nobody knows. But we were formed with the LCFF legislation. It was enacted in 2013. When the legislation passed, this little state organization was born. And it was intended to help districts improve. And that was really one of its sole purposes. And to that, as we've been now in existence, we're actually about celebrating our two-year anniversary, being members of this team, as almost like a startup, if you would, of an agency. The things we really are profoundly connected to are these feelings about things happen at the local level. And what happens in your own local community is crucial and critical. The way you see the world, what you prioritize, kind of your version of quality of instruction. And that really is how schools get better, by being able to define it themselves and move forward in those ways, in the ways that respect everything that's happening here locally. This idea of engagement and transparency is a founding principle for us. We believe, just as in the Local Control Funding Formula legislation, we believe deeply that when all stakeholders are involved, ideas grow stronger, motivation to continue and persist is stronger. And that really creates lasting decisions that can carry the community through. We believe that any commitments may really have to be owned here at the local level, that there isn't some secret answer to something in Sacramento that will solve school districts or any of those dilemmas from afar, that people here locally have to decide how to make sense of what's going on and make the decisions that are important to them. And while we urgently want to address the achievement gap, we know that it takes time. It didn't happen overnight. It's not going to be solved overnight. And the long-term structural changes that have to happen are going to take time and persistence. And therefore, while the others are important, because it has to be at the local level. And that's just a little bit about what matters to us and how we see the world. And then again, the language in the legislation was very clear that we're to advise and assist. So what we don't do per se is come in with answers. You should do this, or this is what's necessary, or if only you did this, right? That you have to find those answers yourselves. We will help and partner with you to do that, and create the strongest decisions that matter here locally. But we don't believe that you'll be told an answer from somewhere outside this organization that'll value and matter. And so to that end, we have partnerships with districts, and we're also doing ongoing training. And Josh, as he mentioned in the introduction, has really been overseeing and developing, and thoughtfully offering trainings throughout the state. Josh, I don't know if you want to speak a little bit about that?
Just very, very quickly. We offer a variety of support statewide workshops. We have a resource library for folks who do training on the Local Control Funding Formula. And we support networks of school districts and charter schools that meet regularly to sort of build collective capacity and to pull each other kind of along on a peer-to-peer basis.
And so Newark has been involved in a CCE partnership. And those are different than the trainings. At Newark, any district can go to trainings, can participate in those, can participate in some of the network opportunities. And that's all voluntary, as was being in the partnership. That was a decision made here collectively, to join us in really thinking about what does it mean to advise and assist? How do you do that in a way that does all the things we mentioned were important to us? So for us, what we believe that means is long-term, side-by-side relationships, where we help with dialogue around addressing problems that matter to you, and solving problems in ways that make sense to you, so that you can get better in ways that matter to you. And we can build capacity by bringing experiences and options that exist throughout the state to help influence, guide, inform the way you make decisions here locally. So really, what we invest in is building people, and really helping people be the best they can be to do the jobs they have. Because we believe that as districts are strong, so is student achievement. The way you make your decisions, the way you kind of are thoughtful and purposeful in that, really carries through to the classroom. And that's why all stakeholders are important, and it's important that everybody's involved in these decisions. Because everybody's ultimate goal is supporting and honoring classrooms and what happens there for children. And then just, you want to quick a couple? So we've had to think about, like, how does all of this matter? Again, we've been in existence for two years. And really, when we started, there was nothing other than that language about advise and assist. And so we had to kind of put meat on those bones. What does that matter? What will we do? How will we help? And for us, it really is about how we believe that capacity building is kind of that lever to districts making the best decisions in their own interest. And so that's what we're ultimately doing, so everybody can, everybody we know shares the commitment to increasing student outcomes. We all recognize that's why we're here. And we also recognize that we are very far removed from the classrooms. Therefore, we rely on the voices of teachers, of staff, of parents, even of students themselves, to explain what's going on, what they need, and how their experiences grow stronger. To that end, these are kind of the big building blocks that matter to us. Collaboration. We believe that conversations like this matter across the district, within the district, with other people in your county. All types of collaboration matters. And to the extent that we can help create those opportunities, we do. Capacity building around problem solving, again, you'll keep hearing kind of some of these themes. They're what matters to us, these ideas of equity and getting to students. Engagement, so we're appreciative of all the people here, really being part of these discussions. Engagement has to happen all the time, at every level, for us to really understand what's going on and how we can select the best opportunities to do better by students. And then we believe deeply in evidence. How do we know that any of these things we were interested in, hopeful for, excited about, made the difference we wanted to be? And to that extent, even moving beyond kind of the state dashboard and that, there's a lot of information in the dashboard. There's also a lot of information here locally that matters. Talking to teachers, talking to parents, talking to students is another type of data we really want to make sure is part of our decision-making. And so before we go any further, though, because that was a lot of... Are there any questions? Anything that doesn't make sense? Anything you want to hear just a little bit more about? Anything we can rephrase? So again, I mean, just to reiterate, like, what we're not is someone who comes in with a list, like, you should do all of these things. Who comes in with a, you would solve, for example, because I've heard many people talking about it, your budget problem if you did this. That is not what we do. Rather, we lift up the conversations you're having, hold you to the decisions you make, and kind of... and kind of have deeper conversations with you about how do you know that was the right decision? And again, we don't have the answer to that question. We only pose it for you to consider. Pat, you had a comment?
I just wanted to say a little bit about why I personally was interested in partnering with CCEE from the beginning. And I think what's important to underscore for the board and for the public is this idea of continuous improvement is something that really matters. In public education, traditionally what you see is when you see instability in, at a board level or at a district level, that causes disruption in the system. And this idea of not throwing everything out and starting over and just fixing things a little bit over time is really important. And let me just frame it this way. A lot of times, the board members or people who run for the school board on the platform have changed. I'm going to get in there, I'm going to change things and, you know, we're going to change this, we're going to change that. And that's what happens. And then you're starting over again. And I know that in the surveying and talking with staff and employees in the district and the community is that instability and all the new programs on top of old programs, a lot of our teachers and employees, they're a little frustrated with the implementation fatigue of all those programs being stacked on each other. And some of that's a function of this instability of, you know, every three years or every big election cycle when there's one or two board members up, it can change into a different direction. Now you have staff going, you know, kind of in another direction. And it never really gets to the depth that you want to get to. But as you study and look at more functional, high-performing districts, they have a lot of stability. There's a lot of predictability in the system. And I think that they are engaged in more of this idea of continuous improvement. And how do we keep what's working? How do we fix what's broken? And how do we keep making that more stable and built on capacity and collaboration? And that real engagement so that it lasts over time? But I think that's the interesting part of why I think, that's what makes these guys unique. And I think it's also what can really help us right now. If I would have had a word for tonight, it would have been optimistic. I know all the ingredients are here for Newark. They're all here. And the neighborhood's changing rapidly. The average home price is going crazy. But who we have in the neighborhood really can set us up for success at the next level academically. But we, either we have an opportunity to influence that, or it will, it will decide without us. And I think that as we go into the next phase of our improvement, process is really going to matter. And we're going to have to slow some things down for a while to get clarity, but I think it's going to pay off. But I just wanted you to know, that was something that was really interesting in my studying of CCEE and why I think it's been very helpful. And it's free, which I also like. But I think that even if they were free and it wasn't valuable, we wouldn't spend time on it. So I think that I've seen a lot of real support and really wrestling with dilemmas we have that are real across California. The funding struggles, I've no idea if you've heard about all of California, and I think it's, it's really challenging.
Can I just say something, something that Josh mentioned, and that was the study of networks of various school districts. And it's definitely, because in your area, you know your area. So there's some commonalities between here and New Haven, Napidus. You know, even San Jose or Oakland because of where we are and the expectations of the parents and the background of the population that's here. So that, that makes me excited. I think that's, I think that can be an ongoing thing because you're not going to be able to go to all school districts. The three of you are not going to be able to hit everybody, tell everyone you said.
And I appreciate you saying that. Currently, our partnership with Newark and the remaining other districts that we have is a network. We've created a network of 11 districts who share many of the conversations we're doing here today. And so with the idea of how do we get those best minds together to be able to have those complex conversations is very exciting for us and very happy to have Newark as one of our partners.
And we know there's some power in kind of regional similarity. We also think there's a power in different perspectives, right? So we have very large districts like LA SD involved in the partnerships. We have county offices such as Kern County. We have Newark. We have other smaller rural districts, really in the Central Valley. And what we find is, and again, it confirms why context matters. There are very specific issues in each of these areas, but many of the broader, big discussions are similar. So they are unique and alike in many different ways. And so this kind of big umbrella of continuous improvement that the state has really reframed and instead of punishing, right? The whole idea with the legislation was instead of punishing, that we're really supporting and uplifting people to move forward and get better through our strengths and not kind of reiterating and hammering on all of our weaknesses. That really is the frame that we are moving through. And so this big idea of continuous improvement really is about getting, the definition I like the best because it's simple and I don't like anything too overworked, is getting better, getting better. So really, how do we think, knowing nothing will be perfect. No implementation ever is, no initiative ever is. You always learn things. I mean, those of us who consider lifelong learners, ourselves lifelong learners. For example, I'm in my seventh year of my doctorate. And so I am getting better and getting better at finishing that thing. And I have had to figure out like how to time it in a way, right? Because I'm a grown student trying to make it work. But I have to keep at it and bring that discipline to trying different things. Like even as simple as around the schedule by which I kind of attack it because life gets in the way. But it's that idea of discipline, like I tried this and it didn't work, so what am I going to try next? And how do we kind of make these decisions and the best decision for me to keep moving? And then really applying that to the full system of the district? How do we see the whole thing from everybody's perspective? From a classified perspective, from a certificated perspective, from the perspective of students and parents? To understand what the problem really is so we can tackle it thoughtfully? And again, we don't have answers, but we can share perspective of what we see in here. As Aida mentioned, we came a year ago and we spoke to a bunch of different people about kind of what they thought about Newark. Not because there's a right or wrong answer, but because their perspective matters. Because what they see and experience every day is important to consider as we make decisions about what to do.
I, you know, as a parent and grandparent, and then as a business owner, and then being on the board, and going to meetings like this where you share what you feel would be something that might improve the district. And then, so you have the cooperation and you have a meeting and you start sharing. And then it seems like whatever you share goes into like a black hole and you never hear about it again. And that's probably frustrating for our community members. So my hope is that you help us keep, keep that flowing so that people, when they do have an idea, that it's, it's important enough to, you know, let them know, here's your idea and here's where it went. And this is something that we're still talking about. Whether it's ways to, to get private school students to think about coming to Newark schools. Because I'm all about public education, like Jan is, and we all are. If not, we wouldn't be on the board. But, but that's the thing that frustrates me and also frustrates a lot of people is when you do have, and you back and forth, and how do you help us make sure that the community doesn't feel that, you know, it was time wasted, that we do value their opinion and their suggestions? To the point where we keep it in the loop and let people know, here's what we talked about at a community meeting and we haven't forgotten this and we're continuing to work on this. And that's what I was hoping that our partnership would, would, would grow to so that we could do a better, a better job of keeping our community engaged in what we're doing. Because a lot of people feel that the decisions are just on the board. And it's, you know, we're, we're board members. We, we, we're about the community and what it takes to make things better. Sorry, Nancy.
No, no, I just was going to.
And this is definitely the form, feel free to talk. I mean, this is about you all actually discussing. We were just laying the groundwork.
Well, I'd like to understand the coherence. Right now, I don't really understand the board's role with the LCAP. And yet, our money is driven into the LCAP. Our, our goals in the LCAP are what the state looks at. And yet, if you look at the legislation that formed the LCAP, our role, specific role, is to appoint the citizens or the parent advisory committee and improve the final product. So I'm really looking for the continu, the coherence of the board being involved in the overall strategic plan of the district that feeds the LCAP, not the other way around where the LCAP feeds what we're supposed to do on the board. Does that make sense?
Ish, I mean, I'm sure we're getting it. Because I think that the conversations, I think what's unique, and Josh can probably speak more. I'm a former superintendent and so he's a current board member. But we, what's unique about the board process is that you take those actions together, right? That, that, but you have to come to consensus around the things all of you need to do your job well and what that looks like for you here in Newark. Because what works in Berkeley or what worked in Santa Rosa doesn't mean it does fit either in process or product to how you live your life here in Newark. They can give you ideas, it can sound good, but it might need to be refined to meet what you want here. And that's why the conversations you have as a board are so critical. So you can reach agreements about what you want it to look like. And I just, a point kind of to clarify too, this is posted as a discussion. It is only a discussion. Any agreements you take, then you take back to a formal board meeting and take action on. I mean, that never changes. This, this is to bring forward and surface questions and ideas you have. So your leadership can begin to make sense of that in the way in which they work and what they're trying to do. Josh?
Sure. The, what you both just raised are very common for boards. So what is the role of individual board member in decision-making? What is the role of the community in decision-making? How does the board as a whole get involved in the operational aspects of the district? You know, boards struggle with that, those challenges, and districts struggle with that all the time. And there's no single answer. And no one here is going to be able to have a light bulb come on and say, done, I will complete. And even if we did do that, it would change the next day and the next meeting. And so through discussions like this, and I know this conversation is primarily focused on the strategic imperatives of where the district's going. But certainly as, I know that, excuse me, the last meeting had self-reflection, you know, sort of workshop around where you as a board were hoping to go. I know there's some key places you want to sort of look forward in that. But it is, it is not easy work. And you all represent the community, that's why you're here. I, I was born and raised in Berkeley, that's why I ran for the board. I went to Berkeley Public Schools. So I completely, everything you're saying resonates with me as a board member very deeply. And it's, and it's a struggle to sort of figure out, you know, and, and we can have many, many meetings about all of the research and the different approaches to how, how to incorporate different voices so that the district operates coherently, so that decisions are made with input. Not necessarily always agreeing with one board member or one community member, but on the whole, making sure that it reflects the will and the desires of the community. So hopefully, as we focus on sort of the strategic imperative piece, we can sort of be thoughtful around, around the points you just raised. And, you know, whether it's a particular approach around budget cuts, which by the way, Berkeley's dealing with as well, or about the LCAP. I mean, I think there are, there are strategies that, you know, we could explore. But really, as Socorro said, whatever you guys do, it's got to be supportive. It can't be something that Socorro either or I tell anyone. It's really going to, it's really going to sort of come from the collective work of, of your governance.
And I think that iterative relationship between that document, the LCAP documents and kind of the goals and strategic plans of any district are always ebbing and flowing. And the goal is that there is a relationship between the two and that both are always evolving because they reflect continuous improvement. They reflect what you've learned up to date. They reflect changes you think you need to make because something either didn't work or it really worked and you want to scale it up. I mean, both of those are possible. And so while there isn't an answer, yes, there is an expectation that there is a relationship. And there is an expectation that we find ways to make sure voices know they're being heard and that engagement is felt, not only from our perspective, but from those we're asking to engage. And so while there isn't an answer, part of it is asking the question. So people can both say, I didn't feel like I was heard. But here's how, then asking the question, what would it look like for you to be heard? Even if your decision isn't part of the solution, right? So hearing from people, literally asking them, taking the time to ask, well, if I heard someone say, we talked to these, I mean, whatever it is, right? Because that changes with every community. But there are ways to solicit from the people you're trying to engage, what it takes for them to know that their point was heard and considered as part of the broader context. As Aida said, so we have these 10 districts throughout the state that volunteers as part of this partnership. And we have a planned curriculum, if you would, about how to make continuous improvement real for them. And so really, and Newark is one of these districts, but we just wanted to show you what kind of the gear looks like in terms of this disciplined process about thinking about how do we learn as a system and make sure we're not repeating the same mistakes? Make sure we're listening to people about what did or didn't work so we can fix it? And really kind of being purposeful and thoughtful about why we're doing what we're doing. And there were some comments earlier, both from you and the public about transparency and really kind of putting out on the table what's working and what's not. Many people with the LCAP dollars have made large investments in X program or Z issue. Did it get us the results we want? How do we know? What did we think would happen? And are we tracking that over time? And so when you think about continuous improvement, that's at every level. At the teacher level, like how are they, I mean, it's naturally part of what teachers do in terms of lesson planning and responding to students and thinking about how the lesson landed or didn't, looking at their own assessments and did they get the results they thought they were going to get or not? So teachers kind of lead the way in understanding continuous improvement. But then echoing that out from the classroom, the principal level, the district level, your governance level, and the community level, how do we let people in on that process and understand what it means? But what we know is that continuous improvement at all only matters as it's translated here to make meaning in Newark. And so we're going to leave, let Pat kind of share with you the journey they've been on in making continuous improvement have legs here in this district.
Do you need a load of coffee?
And there are restrooms here. I don't know, I had to go find it.
Yeah, there's some back here, there's some, I'll just go to the rear. I know there's two back here.
They're for young children.
It is, it is a low back. I just prepared, so don't go too fast.
They're definitely age-appropriate.
Yes, they're low.
Exercising kindness.
With a couple of.
When you were talking about, about continuous improvement, there's got to be concrete things that are there that we can look at and we can see and we can hold on to. So it's very, it's great. Well, if it, if it's a matter of strategies that are approach to teaching, it's a matter of approaches to communication with the community, whatever. But there's, there's got to be concrete things that we can look at and we can point to. Otherwise, it doesn't, it doesn't help.
Well, we definitely do take into actions, but, but again, locally you get to decide. There's that phrase, you can do anything you want, you just can't do everything. There's that phrase, "You can do anything you want, you just can't do everything." Like, you have to decide, you have to focus, you have to make deliberate decisions about what you do and don't do with information about your job. And what continuous improvement is having look at, like, was that the best decision? Oh, sorry, it is, and you want to expand it and do more of it, proliferate that. But it could be like, eh, that wasn't the best. You thought, you know, it would hit kindergartners this way and it would increase. And you didn't see that over time. So, maybe you strategically abandoned that and choose something else, right? But the idea is there was, English learners, for example. There are so many things that any teacher at any given time could choose to do to raise the achievement. But it has to have meaning here in Newark. Just being told, "Oh, you should do this strategy," teaching is, you know, much more complex than that. Who your students are, where they stand, your own personality as a teacher, it's just not that simple. But you can look at different programs you're doing, textbooks you bought, appropriate materials and resources, and think, "Did this give us the bang we want?" A training you're trying to think about, do we send most people in the district to that? Those types of large decisions, I mean, what we're saying is you have to make them collectively and then you have to look at, like, "Did we get the results we wanted?" No way, everything doesn't show up on the dashboard tomorrow, right? That student achievement is a long-term, the way the dashboard measures it is a long-term outcome. So, what are things locally people believe in? Are they surveys? Are there focus groups? Are there GPAs? Whatever it is, but reflecting your values here in Newark.
I think I would also offer that there are things that are considered better practices. I don't say best practices, but things that on the whole, on average, have been shown to be impactful for student outcomes. But what I've learned the hard way in my current education, and I'm not a great educator, but is that just because you adopt those, doesn't mean you get those outcomes. And oftentimes, what happens is, "Oh, we've adopted response intervention, so we're good." Like, without any follow-up on, "Are the outcomes changing? Is implementation, are you implementing fidelity across all, well, all, all of your elementary schools?" Or, you know, whatever it is. And so, I don't think that it's wrong to at all ask the question, aren't there things we can do better? But it's the first question of many. And I think oftentimes that I've seen in school districts that we adopt a great program and then you sort of sit back. And I think that is something that with continuous improvement, we're trying to break ourselves off. It's not just, it's like, what do you think is gonna work? And then just go to the point, how do you know whether it works or not? And then what do you do with that? And that, those second and third, fourth steps are oftentimes not followed up on with the same enthusiasm as adopting them everywhere. Which makes sense, I see it as a board member, but it's where it's sort of really where the hard work.
It seems it's just too easy to adopt something new. Something new that takes the place of something we tried earlier, but we didn't follow through on. So, I think what you're saying about the steps is so very important.
I think you're asking the right questions, right? We want some kind of evidence. And the reality is really testing out what we think we're going to do, how we're going to do it, how we're going to measure how well it's working. I think we're asking ourselves in this process to go deeper, right? That the actions that you, or the agreements that you make are not that they're wrong or anything. Perhaps we didn't test them all the way through to determine how well they worked or why didn't they work. And this is, this word or these discussions is what's aimed to help us get better at getting better.
Or adjust them so they do work.
Exactly. I always say, you know, it's not about turning the baby out with that one, right? So, what, there is good practices. What we have to ask is, did those practices work here and how well? And if they didn't, yeah.
So, I want to throw out, because I feel like we're talking about talking, in terms of specific issues, if we can lay out, like, what are our specific goals and expectations that we want to get out of this meeting? And then unless that's coming as part of the framework, because for me, it's like, thinking about the specific goals. So, before we get into measurements and thinking about that piece a lot, it's like, we're not even on the same page of what are the programs that are working and what are not. So, it's this high-level thing, at least from my expectations, I can speak to that, would be figuring out at the end of this conversation that at least some of the major components that, a big-picture policy in terms of academics, that we've touched on saying, "This is a framework at least that we've agreed to and these are our next steps." So, that's, because otherwise, I feel like we're all really good at talking and we will continue the conversation, but we won't actually get into like, "Okay, this is the specific STEAM program that we want to implement district-wide." Because we never get to that as a board.
Great introduction.
Yeah, we're gonna start to get that iceberg.
So, along those lines, and I think that before I get into the process, I'm gonna still think now, I want to share a couple of things. First of all, we've taken a pretty big step to make things better, which is fixing the 13-year structural deficit. And I know that's not something you get rewarded for in the public as a board, but it's really important. Now, we have to deal with the fallout and try to go forward in a better way so we don't land up in that space again. I know that's one of the priorities the board has set forth. But I think it's good for a moment for you to stop and appreciate how important that is. You fixed a problem that was going on and it's gonna create better footing for us. And as we go forward, we just have to put some pieces in place so that it doesn't creep back into something that we didn't want and it doesn't creep back into a situation where we're losing the people for not having good reasons. And I think that's something that's important. So, I want to start with that. I would also say the other good thing, it's a step in the right direction, is the board has created some strategic imperatives. That says exactly kind of what you were saying. We need improved achievement, that's number one, we need to talk more about number one. Number two is stabilize and create a budget that is functional and doesn't slip into deficits in spending again. And number three is how do we ride the ship? Ride the ship and get enrollment not only to stabilize, but to increase? And how do we get people who left us to come back and get people who are here to stay? Those are the strategic imperatives that really matter. But I think that, I'm ready to get into a process where we need help. So, as superintendent and secretary to the board, some of the things that we need as an organization that are some of the best practices is, we really need to prioritize and we need to focus and we need to develop some plans that we can progress monitor to see if we're making steps and improvements where we really want to make improvements. The reality is, at the board level, you guys don't really get to many problems. You get dilemmas. You have to choose between two good things and you can't afford both. And it's really, I think most people don't fully understand that unless they've sat in the board chair. And that's really difficult. But we have that responsibility as leaders of the district to, okay, these are the things that are most important. We have a little bit of an idea that we'll share kind of a first draft tonight of some things that we've been asked to do, but we're gonna have to triage. We can't do everything for all people, we just can't. And as Supero said, as a master schedule, when I did that, "I can do almost anything you want, but we can't do everything you want. We just don't have the money." But I will tell you that I think the difference of, if we can make things really important and clear and set some clear measurable goals that we monitor in progress with frequency to see if we're getting a return on investment and we have good metrics around it, what we measure and what we monitor will get done quicker. So, I think this whole idea of coherence is critical. I think if we look at, how do we pull it all together underneath the framework of the strategic imperatives? I think there's a way to start doing that. But I think that that's the hard part, because everything's important. And just because we say this is really more important, which I think about academic achievement being the most important thing to do, what falls under that category? And how do we get monitoring that in a formal way in board meeting? So, there's no surprises. We know, hey, we're gonna be seeing that. I know we've talked about mapping out next year of board meetings and start putting things in place so everybody knows what's coming and, you know, helping pull back the veil of really how boring it's not very exciting behind the scenes, like some people might think. It's not exciting, but it's really critical work. So, I think focusing the plan, looking at return on investment and triaging is part of it as a best practice. And the other piece is what we're doing here tonight. We have to carve out time to work together as a board to do a team and have these conversations. And it's hard, it's hard, we're all busy. I know you guys, it's difficult and I know some of you have your own businesses and work. But I think the more time we can spend, or at least plan the time ahead to spend as a team working on this, then the more we can refine it and make it better. So, I'm ready to share with you just a draft of what we've developed in collaboration with CCE. And anything I share with you going forward here is exactly to have a draft. So, it's gonna take a while, but at least we start, we have to start somewhere with the first list of things that are important so we can start vetting it and refining it and putting those metrics to it, and we'll look at it in a minute. But I'll only frame this with you for now. So, I think we're looking at in terms of kind of a flow chart. So, is there a need for improving something? So, if we have an area that's really doing well, and I would think about this in terms of the dashboard. If there's things on the dashboard that are in red or yellow, we probably need to improve something there. So, okay, is it aligned with strategic imperative? Yes, special education in our district needs some attention. Doesn't mean that everything's bad, it means we need to do something to, there's room for improvement. So, it's aligned with imperative, number one. Now, who should be involved? I think that's another key question. Who's closest to the work that really knows how that program or initiative or curriculum or whatever that might be, who should be on the team? And how do we create a cross-section of people to really focus in on this problem in a real way to come forward with some real solutions? Okay, we've gotten that far, we're still saying yes, we're going forward in the flow chart. Now, we have to move to more of a team improvement process. So, this is based on continuous improvement, kind of a science model. And we've adapted it and many of the districts in the network have been kicking this around. But pretty simple, let me simplify it for everyone. Plan, do, check, adjust is really the simple framework of this. So, let's plan the work, let's, you know, let's evaluate the effectiveness of the program. How's it aligned with strategic imperatives, LCAPs, CIPSAs? Let's develop an action plan, let's implement the action plan. And this is the part where it breaks down if we're not careful. Do we, how do we do? Do we review the results? Do we see, did it make a difference? We got more kids in AP classes, are they doing better on AP scores? Are they making it past the first year of college? Are they getting through four years of college? Those are the things that are more critical that we need to look at to really, and then if we go through that next two processes, then you're kind of rinse and repeat and get into that again. So, the idea is not that complex of an idea. I think the challenge is just come into some agreement about this is kind of how we need to start doing business differently and how do we focus our time in board meetings? And how do we focus what we're asking staff to do as employers of this district? As board members, you're in some capacity an employer of employees. But the whole idea of doing it as a team and really looking at it collaboratively is important. Another component that's important, this is hard to read. I do have some handouts I can share, some of the audience. Let's see, it stops. Here's, you shared some of the board's stuff together. So, this is, yeah, the set stuff there. So, one of the things that's gonna be important is this idea of what's everyone's role? What's the student's role, teacher's role, principal's role, just central office's role, board's role? And how do we really get to the place where we start really aligning the system? Because that's really what we're talking about with the purpose of focusing and really getting to a deeper level with continuous improvement. We have.
Oh, no, sorry, I'm late.
Are we getting back to the audience? But you'll see, this is just a simple model, it doesn't have to be, it's not super fancy. But just the idea of what are the roles and responsibilities of this cycle of improvement? And what role does the board play? So, for example, we're working on some aspect of maybe RTI. How is the board analyzing, reflecting on that? What is their goal around it? What is some action they want to do? They've developed a policy and they want to change a couple of things. And how are we gonna evaluate it? Then again, exactly what does cabinet have to do? What's their responsibility for that? How do we prepare that for the board to look at? How do we compare things for the agenda? How do we give them everything they need to see? I know one thing we've talked about is leaving things in the agenda for longer than we need to, beyond just what's your partner around it. So, you have a deeper saturation time with the public, especially on big-ticket items. And a new normal being, if it's not ready to go on the agenda, it doesn't go on. And staff's gonna have to come to terms with that. What do site leaders need to do to support it? How are they looking at RTI at the site level? What are they hearing? How are they developing goals? What's their action? How do teachers feel? What role are they gonna play? And even up to the students, how can we support them? And maybe there's something that they can play in that role. Just as an example. So, what I want to share with you is really, did you want to, is this a protocol you wanted to do? Okay. Before I hand it back to Socorro, we're gonna get to where we have some time in a little while to help prioritize. What I can tell you is, I want you to start thinking about, and for the board, you all know what the three strategic imperatives are. And there's a lot of things that fit under that. But in a while, we're gonna sit down and ask you to help us triage, okay, under priority one, what do you want to see in the next six months? What do you want to see in the next 12 months? And what do you want to see in the next 18 months? And then, number two, same thing. Number three, same thing. And then maybe also, how do we want to change the board structure so we increase our time progress monitoring, the stuff we said we wanted to look at? And what are some structures we can look at? And I have a starting point up there for you that we can react to, but it's not comprehensive. So, we're gonna brainstorm first and I'll set that up more in a minute. But I want to know that it's coming and that will really help staff and we can draft it and bring it back to the public forum again and keep working that until we feel we got it to where, okay, we're ready to go from there. Supero?
And these questions are really just to kind of, again, put us in conversation because what I can share from my four years as superintendent is, what it's hard to do is read everybody's mind. What I think a lot of people don't realize is that you don't always hang out together, we don't always hang out together. You come together at board meetings and that's kind of it. And so, it's not even like, even after years of service together, you might not know one another kind of as you would expect, like friends or neighbors or, well, not neighbors, we're not always friends, but our neighbors. Like, there are just expectations. And so, I think many times we take for granted, even sometimes when we say the same words, that we mean the same thing. And what you realize, if we allow ourselves to have more time in conversations, sometimes it's not the same thing. And we need to build consensus around the things that matter, both as you operationalize it, like, literally. So, for example, we were able to watch the last special board meeting you had that hour before your regular board meeting. And I heard many people call for, ask for more time for big-ticket items, as Pat mentioned. And so, what does that mean? What I thought I heard was some agreements that there would be a first reason and a second. So, you have literally space in between to just percolate on the ideas, really think about them, hear from people, hear from your community members and staff kind of about the ideas. But you have to agree to that together, because you might even want more time on some ticket items. When you look at your calendar, you might be like, "This is such a big decision, we need X and X amount of time." But you really have to articulate that out loud in opportunities like this, even at your regular scheduled board meetings when you have discussions, so that staff can oblige you and prepare that for you. And so, as you think about kind of this process, what are the types of things that you really need to be successful? I heard you say, I paraphrase briefly, and feel free to correct me, that you need some literal priorities, you want to get to it, you want to apply. You want to apply this to what the work is. Like that's when you'll begin to feel more comfortable about all of this. Anybody else? Because if all five of you had different priorities, for example, like these strategic imperatives, and we're just going to put the, more or less every district in the state has pretty much the same imperative, right? I mean, we all want to educate each other. We all need to make sure that folks balance, right? We all want people to choose our schools. That just kind of is public education in California. But the decisions you make to ensure that are very specific to here, to your people, to your families, to your students, to your history, right? Those actions will not all look the same. We'll all go about that in very different ways. And so to do that well, to do the things you've talked about, like monitoring and checking over time to make sure things are progressing, like what do you need? Are there things that you have gotten that you want more of or things you haven't gotten that you need?
I think from my, from my perspective, I need to know where we are right now because we have, especially in the areas that we get measured on and that the community really looks at us to improve. And where are we on our language arts program? Where are we on our math program? Where are we on our closing achievement gap? Where are we in special ed? Where are we in getting our kids A to G and successful career in college? So where are we now? What programs do we have in place? And how are we measuring? Because I don't think we've talked about those things. We, as a board, we haven't really talked about those things. We, we've gotten reports at the beginning of the year on how our students are doing. We get reports on, through the Friday update and otherwise, on staff development for the new math program. But we really, we really don't know what the math programs that we're looking at are. And I just, I just think, I don't know where we are on those really important areas that we're getting measured by the community on and by the state.
How about others? Because again, it's about consensus, right? For the staff to provide all of, somewhere in how each of you feel, we have to find the things that everybody feels. You have to figure that out. So your.
So that's exactly where I'm at in terms of why I want to have these discussions of how do we want to move collectively? Because if, if we're individually saying, this is the program that I care about, where is this at? As opposed to maybe thinking about the broader view, okay, let's look at the dashboard, each of the areas, and then within the areas, what are the programs that we are, excuse me, running? And then what's their effectiveness so that everybody's kind of on that piece and then say, if this isn't working, let's eliminate that and figure out based on staff recommendation, how you want to move forward in actually addressing these scores. So I mean, one of the things that is frustrating for me as having gone through the district is that some of our scores are the same, if not worse. And figuring out, or now being part of the board seeing that what we need to do is map out a plan, because if we don't have a plan, then that's what, why we keep spinning our wheels. So we really, and that's from a previous point before, of really diving into what are some of the, so look at the dashboard as a basis of an understanding for components. Those are the components. And then under the, each of the areas, what are the programs? And then figuring out collectively how we're going to move to do these programs. Because if we have 20 programs in one thing and we're getting decreasing scores, we're obviously doing something wrong. Now if we're increasing scores, then we have to kind of evaluate those pieces. So I really think that's where I'm at as well.
Anybody else?
Part of it has to do with whose responsibility it is for this information and for deciding how to go about doing the method. And that's, that's been sort of an issue in terms of the board versus the staff. All of us, I think, as board members, need different kinds of information for us to make our decisions because we're different kinds of learners and we have different experiences. So that we do have different needs for depth. We have different needs for kind of information that goes with it. But there's got to be a point at which we allow the staff to do their work and without us guiding them how to do it.
My whole thing has been, how do you engage staff? Because there's going to be some layoffs. And so how do you engage the individuals that are going to be affected on things that weren't done, that could have alleviated this so that we wouldn't have it? And how do we set things in place or in motion so that it doesn't happen again? So for instance, 10 years ago, we had a similar situation where we went down to two counselors, if I remember correctly. And then we fought like heck to get back to the four. And then we also fought like heck to get the class size when it first came out where, you know, the big carrot, you know, was out there. And, you know, most of us knew that at some point, you know, we weren't going to have the money and we were going to have to make hard decisions. And it's hard to do that. It's hard to make a decision on changing the elementary schools from 24 to one to what we decided is 29, although most of them are, you know, K3 or 25 to one. But so decisions that are made, if you don't involve the people that are going to be affected by it, whether they're going to have to find a point somewhere else, if you don't engage them, I just feel that you can't improve because they're the ones that are really being affected by this thing. That's where you should get the input on, you know, what is it that we can do from the decision-making process to make your job easier? I have nothing but faith in the teachings that we have. I was really, really, it really hurt years ago when I remember losing a couple of teachers, for instance, at Lincoln Elementary that, you know, I mean, young teachers that just love kids. And then you have to explain the process that, you know, you know, we have unions and even though you might be considered a better teacher than a person that's been around 10 years, that we do have things in place that we tie by. But, you know, people have what they call exit strategies where you, when a person exits, you tell them, you know, what was it that, you know, was good about this? What was it that wasn't working? And I think we need to do more of that. But the thing that happens is you talk about it and everything, and then you, it stays there. Again, we have to find a way to take it to the next level, like, you know, remember Josiah said, where we begin to look at, you know, the AP classes, for instance, if you want to increase, you know, the AP offerings. But yet, you can't have 10 kids in a class, you know? You have to find a way to work within the system so we maximize the number of kids in that classroom so that, you know, you know, it just, it's an imbalance if you have 10 kids in an AP class and then you have 29 kids in a kindergarten class. You know, it's, that's, it doesn't fly with a lot of people. So that's the thing. The engagement is what I want. Besides, you know, I mean, us, yes, as board members, but, I mean, really engaging the people that are affected by the decisions we're making. And that's hard. It's, you know, because a person is thinking, where am I going to go next? You know, I'm not going to have a job starting young to 30. I have to start working. So how do you engage that person to help you so that we don't have to do this anymore?
Right. And so what I heard, kind of in generally speaking, again, Josh, you can try and invest your A year in experience, but generally speaking, the board kind of providing the vision and the roadmap for the what, right? And staff figuring out collectively how? And then showing you that those decisions on how are the best ones for what you want. And what you have to do is figure out what information do we need to feel confident that these are the right hows, that those decisions are the right ones? And if we care about AP numbers or we care about class size, and again, you're going to have to funnel down and focus on a couple of key components, what will it take? What is the data you want to see when that we're moving in the right direction? And I hear passion around the budget cuts accordingly. I mean, those are, that's, no one wants to be in those situations. And so kind of really having the time to think about, what do you need to know you're moving the ship, as Pat said, in the right direction? And what's the frequency of information you want? What's the visual kind of manner of the information you want? And there's no one right answer to that. It has to make sense to this board.
Just to sort of echo a little bit of what Socorro said, in sort of thinking about what each of you responded. Are there, and I guess I'll just sort of reverse order. So first for the, will you talk about in terms of engagement? Is there, is there additional information that you need to feel more comfortable moving forward? Not necessarily something that happens differently than what happened, but information that would be helpful for you to, as one board member among five, feel, to feel like you are doing your role as a board member?
I think what matters to me most is, is we know that we can't give increases like Fremont and us next door or, or.
And you were talking about compensation for employees.
Right, compensation. So we have to find a way that, and I know we've tried it, and I know each one of us values the employees we have, but we have to find a better, a better way or do it more often on doing things that make our employees feel better. So that we, you know, what, you know, you're talking about being in the trenches, you know, where you feel for the person that's got 29, 30 kids in the classroom. And the person feels that even though I might only get a small increase when the next, you know, the teachers, you know, the, the contract, I still want to feel that, you know, the administration and my principal and the board members value, they value what I bring to the school, to the kids. And it's all about kids. And kids know, and maybe we should spend more time looking at kids and, you know, and seeing the way they react when, like my granddaughters today were talking about what happened in their classroom. And one of them just wouldn't stop talking. You know, apparently something was done in that, in that second grade classroom that just, she just wanted to talk about what happened, you know? And I'm thinking, if we spend more time as board members and as an administration valuing the employees that we have, knowing that things, they could go somewhere else and things would be better, but yet they don't want to, they want to stay here. How do we do that, you know? Or do more of it? Because we do do some of it, but.
But it doesn't feel like, as one board member, you don't feel like the district has, are they transparent about how it is doing that? Or has done it enough for, so as one board member, how the employees, currently employed, feel appreciated and acknowledged?
Well, that's.
Is that accurate?
Yeah, basically. And it's, it's not, you know, something that, you know, I feel the administration is not trying to do. But right now, we're having, we're going through a work process of school discipline as far as, you know, having to make decisions that people are going to lose their jobs. And I think collectively, board and the administration needs to find ways so that our teachers and our employees are classified and all employees feel more valued. Not only the ones that may lose their jobs, but everybody. So that they know that, hey, these are tough decisions for these people. And they're not just going to make a decision that I'm going to lose my job. This is tough. And it is tough for all of us. And maybe we need to be more transparent and let people know how tough it is for us to make these decisions we're making and how much we would rather not. There's nothing that tears me apart more than knowing the kids are not getting the counseling that they're supposed to get at the high school level. I mean, even one counselor per class, you know, is not enough. But engaging the counselors, not that we're not doing it, but we used to, years ago, we used to have internships where we would have, you know, people that were going through counseling programs that maybe at Cal State East Bay or San Jose State, that would, we would just try to bring them in to kind of use us as a place where they can learn as part of their process of getting a degree, where they can help us at certain levels. And I know Superintendent Sanchez is doing some of that. And, you know, I blame myself for taking the time to go visit, you know, college campuses with the administration as board members and trying to engage young people on, you know, if you want to do an internship, we'd love to have you do it in Newark so we can see what we're doing. There's no easy answers. But I think no matter what you're doing, if people feel that the decisions that you're making are tough decisions and that you value them being part of Newark and you don't want it to go anywhere, I think, you know, the more we can do in that area, I think, for me, it goes a long way.
So I want to back up. So I think going into weeds in terms of the specifics, maybe what we do as part of the planning is that we incorporate like staff development or that type of piece as a component within the framework and the structure of what we're discussing for priorities. And then the other piece would be when we're making decisions, we have a process that is outlined where there is sufficient community input. But I think we should, from my perspective, we should get back to figuring out like the high level pieces and then we can dive into the specific details.
We definitely will. We're kind of just priming the pump so we give people time to think about the big idea. So you can apply them to actual, very specific, concrete examples that you're going to take on. But that's exactly the point, just to get people thinking about it because you're all very different. Like you mentioned, Jen, you're different learners, you're different, you've had different life experiences, different jobs. That's part of why the government's team is so valuable, that it's that collective spree to core coming together to really inform the system. And so how do we maximize that? Let you be yourself, let you have your specific needs, but also function efficiently as a government's team so that a staff can follow the decisions you make and kind of actualize them and bring them to life. And so what I'd like to do for the next, two things, we just have a slide of your vision and mission, and these are from your own documents. We got them from something Pat shared. And then your strategic imperatives. If you could just toggle either between those other two. And maybe if we get up for a five-minute stretch, get a little coffee, but think about, we're coming in from the outside. What, and we get to read about you, looking at your website, we get to see some of your board meetings, but what of all this matters to you? What is the most important thing? Is it the vision of where you're going? And again, you're all different and all of it matters to some degree. So I'm not saying that things, does the strategic imperative, so for example, just feeding back some of what I've seen, for you, I see progress monitoring, that's what you've mentioned the most. And if the big idea is focus, let's get to measuring. For you, Ray, what I've heard the most is people. How do people feel, right? And both of. And both of those perspectives make the system strong and solid, so one isn't better than the other. But it's important for staff to understand, so as they present that, kind of what you were speaking about, all of that's included, so everybody gets the information they need to confidently make decisions that move the district forward. So if we're coming from the outside, trying to understand what matters to you, you, as each individual board member in Newark, which of these kind of pieces of paper is the most important for us to think about? Just think about that, get up, walk around, we're gonna come back, and then we're gonna...
Say that again, because, because we saw two slides.
Yeah, there, I mean, so you have your vision, mission, you have your strategic imperatives, you even have like a list of brainstorm ideas, I mean, you know, you've got lots of these pieces of paperwork. So, but which of those kind of mean the most to you as an individual and as a board member? Like, that we need to keep central to these conversations we're having? I know you're gonna hate this, just bear with me, just hang in, we're gonna get, we're gonna get.
She said take a five-minute break.
Five-minute break.
It's just a touch of feeling for me, for me, it's just.
And I think that's fair.
Let's get into the pieces, like, maybe only because, I've only been in two years, or three years, but it's, I think we have a respectful relationship with each other, we respect each other, and we have this kind of understanding that we wanna work as a team. For me, it's more of, we continue having these conversations about, about conversations, but then we don't actually have the meat of the, the specific, okay, here's the math program, here's the elementary school, here's the middle school, here's the high school, this is where we're at, these are the numbers, this is the piece.
In the interest of time, what I think what I can do to help you, is, I have a starting point that everyone can look at during the break.
And part of it, I guess, in terms of values or whatever, I guess, we all give up our time, we have different pieces, and, and also as a family, man, I'm thinking about like, giving away four hours to discuss the specific meat, as opposed to just, from my perspective, like.
Process.
And I just wanna share, just, I know this is very difficult, because we wanna get to the work. And what I wanna share is that if we don't get to the conversations first about the work, even getting to the work won't get to fruition. And so this is what we are learning in this process, that we are, we call it solutionitis. People wanna get to what is it, and they get to a solution and move on. And what we haven't done well is to have the conversation of what matters. And I know, when you're at the meeting here, and when you are, come on, let's get to the work, and let's get to the process, doesn't, without listening to all the voices, you can create success. I understand, I mean, there are different learners in Newark, some of us need to share even without some of us, it's just get right to the work, but it's important for everyone to listen to the conversation.
Just a little.
That's why I'm not, that's why I'm just.
Just a little part of it is, you might know each other, but we don't.
Yeah.
Right, and so we're just trying to hear more about what matters here. And I get that you've been doing the work, and this isn't your first day, and that, but so we can all move forward together. We need to surface what matters to you, so it's always incorporated as you.
See, and for me, that's a different framework, and I'm okay with that, because he brought up, you said something, that as opposed to us talking about like, what is important, because for me, I feel for all of us, what's important is whether our kids are excelling, and why we're not improving in our schools, or why we're moving forward. And we're all on the same page with that, so, but, but if we don't have a specific like, kind of, strategy of how we're actually gonna implement those specific things, then we're always gonna have conversations, again, about conversations, so, so I, okay, so I get that, that's fair that you wanna get to those, as opposed to.
Yeah, and we're gonna get to tonight.
Okay, because, yeah, I'm not doing a weekend cheat for, yeah, sorry.
Okay, just five minutes walking, so we could come back. So, in the interest of kind of respecting the ebb and flow of the meeting, if, again, sharing with us and sharing with the community, you could share, what of all the paperwork of the kind of things that are out about your district matter to you? If you could do it, the commercial version, not the TV show version, so just the short version of kind of what that is that matters? Is it the vision, is it the strategic imperatives? Is there one imperative that just, it's all you, it consumes you, it's all you think about? Just what is that in kind of, a pretty specific way, so we just get to understand better?
Maybe I would even push the, we have a ninety-second version, that you time us, and that's it, like.
Wow.
That's my suggestion.
That's a very good suggestion.
I got a timer, I'm ready.
Okay, we'll do that.
We'll go up and start before, so there's four of you.
Yeah, okay.
A suggestion has been made, there's a second board member interested, how do the other board members feel about that?
I agree, ninety seconds. Give me ninety seconds to think about it.
And I, and I pause for process only because there are some fantastic ideas that oftentimes in groups, one person suggests it, one person agrees, and then just move forward. And it's important, if possible, just to check, make sure that there's consensus or not around it, and I'm glad there is, and I don't wanna deliver the point, so.
I got one or two-minute option, I can't do it now.
Here, I got ninety seconds.
Ninety seconds.
Okay, so the statement that you're looking for is, what is the most important thing to us, the school does, I've got it.
All right, and?
Okay.
Go.
What does success look like for a student to be successful? And with the concept that every student needs to have someone there that is mentoring or monitoring the progress of what's happening to that student? So when they finish, they get the best education as an individual.
Okay, great.
Wow, that was twenty seconds.
Great, that, that would go in twenty seconds or less.
I can go.
All right, go.
So, my focus is academic excellence and achievement, so figuring out that, or ensuring that we create an opportunity for all of our students to succeed and excel at every level, and, and have a systemic way of, of measuring, measuring that through a determined timeline.
Great.
Wow, another twenty-second one, impressive. No pressure to keep it twenty seconds, you actually have ninety seconds, just.
You can't do it.
Mine is, mine is, is every student college and career ready. And so, so that, if you back that up, it's, it's, what's, what are the impediments to having our, our kids not A to G, or not having a career path through R O P, for example? What are the impediments for the gateway classes? What are our impediments for managing our budget so that we can provide the support for students that will help them where they're having problems? The intervention type stuff? That's it.
Great. Can I bring this home?
I've already talked.
Do you have ninety more seconds?
Academic excellence. Eliminate roadblocks for the kids that are self-learners, and creating opportunities so that they can grow. And then focusing on the kids and with parent involvement, because if you don't include the parents, then you're just wasting your time. So, engaging the parents and helping the kids that are, the seventy percent of the kids, or at least fifty percent or so that are going to the community college, and kind of sharing how important the community college is, as, as, you know, on the road to getting a full year college education. So academic excellence.
Great, thank you. So Pat?
I, I really wanna be part of setting Newark unified on the path to success. And that's for the purpose of serving all kids at high levels. I, I agree with the A to G preparation and career, career readiness, but what I would add to that is, as determined by the student and the family, not as determined by the system. We don't get to choose a pathway for kids, families and kids pick the pathway, we provide the structure.
Great, thank you. So.
How much longer was mine?
Uh, twenty-three seconds.
So kind of taking that back to, kind of as Frankie was helping us do, back to what does that mean as you operationalize it as a team in your work? Because this is all of our work to make sure this gets done, and Pat, I know you have some ideas.
About mapping, about, yes, I think part of it is really, we had talked about going deeper with the first meeting of the month on business, and having the second meeting of the month be more workshop, staff reports, informational for the board, that's one concept. We had talked about spending more time on the things that are most important. I know, I think three of us went to a training in Berlin game, we talked, we listened and learned about a district that was really trying to spend at least sixty percent of its time discussing academics at board meetings. So this whole idea of inspect what you expect, and as a board, are we spending time on the right things, having the right conversations? And are we having really polished board meetings occur in a way that is professional and formal, in, in the best sense of the word, instead of casual and informal, or it's deteriorating and it becomes dramatic? We don't want drama, I didn't really, I really do prefer a board, board meeting. But I think that, so as we look at, not just how we structured the board meeting, but also the interaction between the board and cabinet, so that you guys have the information you need, with enough time for it to saturate, or in the way that you can hear it best, a balance with enough time to get it in front of you on the agenda, so that it's complete and in the agenda packet on time, so people aren't getting frustrated with, why isn't that in the agenda, and we're adding? And, and like, for example, tonight, I know there was a comment about, you know, why wasn't there more on the agenda? Because we, I wanted to go to the last minute with the details of what we were putting in the PowerPoint. And if I would have published it today, it would've been a late edition, and people would be frustrated by that. But I wanted to wait to have as much information as possible with, with all of facilitators and board members, just trying to make sure that it gets structured in, so that you guys get out of this what you want. So I think that the idea of mapping a year of board meetings out, we've talked about that. So really, us spending time, if we go through the next process, which would be helping prioritize, and map out some of the board meetings, and create a leadership calendar, and having like, no surprises of what's coming into board meeting outside, separate what's outside of our control. And we're also progress monitoring some of the things in the strategic imperatives, I think we're gonna see things move quicker, and I think we're gonna see things move more intentionally. And I think we're gonna feel like, we, I mean, really, the board, I want you guys to feel that, okay, I feel like we're getting some traction now. I'm getting questions I've been asking for a long time, I'm getting information I need, I'm seeing reports that I need to see to make those decisions. So that's really about board structures, what I wanted to say, and I do have, I have captured our notes to this point, based on what we've had in conversations, but also in our, a, a little bit of some of the structures we've discussed, idea-wise, in our board self-evaluation workshop, but it's not a comprehensive list, it's just a starting point to react to. But I'll, I'll come back to that in a minute.
So I just wanted to highlight the second and, and third bullets on, on this slide, and really emphasize the importance of something like this. You have, depending upon, in Berkeley, we spend probably two hours a meeting on real substantive stuff. I don't know if the same is here, maybe two or three hours, but whether it's two hours or three hours, over the course of a calendar year, you have between, say, forty and sixty hours of board time. That's not very long. And so that is your resource. Just like a budget reflects the priorities that you set as a district, your, the amount of time you spend on items reflects the priorities you have as a, as a board. And so the ability to do the mapping, the intentional board agenda setting, is, exactly to where I was pointing, allows you to focus your role as a board, to your point member of Rucker, and it allows you to be strategic, it allows you to be transparent, if that's sort of where you need to be, and it allows you to not get sidetracked in half these sort of professional meetings. And to go back to the sort of, prove it cycle, what I hear those two presidents saying is that you're developing, you know, that map is your action plan for your board, and then you're gonna implement it over the course of the next six months. The question I would, I would pose is, how are you going to sort of review those results? And how are you gonna track the data around them? So one suggestion to consider would be, having actually timing each substantive board item, whether it's fiscal, facilities, and then at the six-month mark, or something around then, actually total it up. And I will just say that I did this as, as a board, prior to my first time as a board president, we, I did this, and we spent twenty-five percent of our time on instructional things. Over fifty percent wasn't fiscal and facilities. I didn't feel that way, but when you tally it up, you know, it wasn't down to the, right, we're, this isn't, you know, we're not nitpicking, and some things could have been both, but basically, we, we were, we were an operation-focused board. And I think what the superintendent is encouraging us all to do, or you all to do, is sort of push yourselves in that direction, which I think is clear upon your answers, you all wanna do. And so whether it's a three-month, or a six-month, or a year-long, whatever you pick, but pick a time, whether it's minutes, whether it's spending time at the end of a board meeting, reflecting on, did you spend the right amount of time at today's board meeting? There's any number of ways to collect that data, but, but I would encourage you to sort of follow this cycle and decide a time to reflect and adjust. And it's not bad if the first six months or a year, you spend half of your time on facilities and finance. That's not a bad, that's not a failure, right? That is you recognizing what you've tried to do, and then reflecting on how you can redirect your energies. So, so I just wanna sort of reiterate that point, that, that it's not a failure at what you come back, but you're not happy about. In fact, that's a positive thing, 'cause you're able to adjust. So I just.
Do you, do you set a time for each agenda item? I don't, I don't know if it was your district, or one that I saw, they said twenty-two minutes for this item, but we took twenty-eight, so they, in the minutes.
So we do, we are, we are hyper-structured as districts go, and there's pluses and minuses to that. Oftentimes, we find that our discussions are rushed if we set too structured a time, because the presentation goes as long as it goes, board members, we love to talk. You know, and, and for, I mean, we're elected to offer our opinions, that's why we're here, so there's a reason to talk. But, but, just as one example, you set a thirty-minute agenda item, ten minutes of presentation, twenty minutes of discussion, so a two-to-one ratio. Ten minutes of presentation, done on the dot. That means that with five board members, each board member has four minutes total to talk and to get answers, which is nothing, that's, that's a thirty-minute, that's a long chunk of time. So, that also goes to point three, which is you can't have five substantive items, and I don't know if you do this, I'm not saying that you do, but it's the intentionality and the strategicness, and about, you know, you can't do everything. And so I just, I just wanna encourage you to sort of take advantage of the suggestions here, and adopt sort of a reflective and individual process in this piece as well, as all of the more instructional pieces that you do. So I think it will allow you to learn from that experience about how you as a board can continue to grow and become more focused on things.
And I think it's an important point, that continuous improvement isn't something everybody else does, right? It's also something everybody involved with the district is invested in, everybody has to pick their point to learn and grow and get better at getting better, right? It's not just, oh, they should do that, or that, it's, it's all of us collectively have things to get better at. And so the idea of thinking about how you spend your own time, or the agenda setting, and what your bylaws say about who does the agenda setting of the superintendent, and how you pick those topics, and how you wanna go, I mean, even prioritizing there, you can't change everything all at once, but what, what would be the most powerful thing to change first? And then cascade the rest in at a pace everybody can, can adjust to. Those are the types of actual decisions you have to make together to inform staff so they can begin those changes over time. Because you're not only changing the way you operate, you're changing the culture in which you operate by doing this behavior. by doing those behavioral changes.
And just to sort of circle back to a point I made earlier, so based upon some of the head nodding, it seems like this is something that there might be some interest in doing, which is great. Everyone's excited, okay. But that's not actually where the difficult piece is. We don't get a set of good ideas, right? It's who is literally going to add the minutes up? And is there time in June or whenever you're going to reflect, to reflect? You know, like, I mean, like, that's, those aren't, those are simple pieces. But that's where in this cycle...
They're deliberate.
You have the results review. You have the value. And if you don't do that, and I'm not saying you're not going to, I'm just saying that, so it's good to feel good, but it's the plan, right? And then it's the adherence to it that is really, even if something as simple as this, that is surprisingly difficult to do.
Like anything, immediate feedback is much better than three months down the line. So if in truth it's something the board wants to do, then there needs to be immediate feedback.
And those are things you can decide on together.
Exactly.
And just to be like overly transparent about this, the board structures and how the meetings are put together and assembled, it's your meeting. The board meeting is not my meeting. This is the board's meeting. So this is the one thing that's not a strategic imperative. This is kind of, where do you want to start? Where do you want to start this journey? And where do you guys feel is the most support? It could be something as simple as, you know, we're just going to debrief the board meeting together afterwards, the day after. And let's play it back, maybe watch it and see if we can do better. Something as simple as that is a step in the right direction. So you have it over here, you're going to have a poster that's going to be, here's some ideas you've come up with. And that's really for the board to wrestle with. Everything else is staff. All the other strategic imperatives is where do you want staff to go? What do you want to deliver in six months and twelve months and eighteen months? So I think, just to give you kind of the framework, the important thing is, as I would tell you with turnaround districts, turnaround schools, the important thing to remember is you have to triage. But if you pick something, pick something that you know is going to be very high yield, that's going to pay off in a lot of different ways. One thing alone is not going to do it. If you pick one thing alone that impacts multiple things, that's probably a better thing to look at to start with because you'll have better impact by starting that. So it has to be high yield. I think that would be the way I would frame it. So wherever you start, it's to be high yield and you stick to it. Give it a good, you know, three, four, six months. And then let's revisit that and see if it has changed. But I think that that's the one piece that is kind of the board part. It's not my part. And it's really up to, whatever you guys want to do, we'll support it because it's your meeting. But I think we want to set it up so that you're feeling like, okay, we're getting more focus in the board meetings. I'm glad that we're doing that. I'm doing a little more of what I need. And that sense of fear and worrying and starting to kind of settle, that's my goal.
I think that when we talked, we talked about this a number of times. And I think we agreed that the mapping of a year of board meetings is definitely an easy, concrete place to start. It gives us something that we can look at and we can be successful or not successful and then change what we need to change. And we had decided that two people will be with superintendent and setting up the agenda versus just the board president. And so that would be, that would be another piece that's part of that. So there's more people that are involved.
We're doing it. We are divertly decided that, but we're doing it.
Yeah, we're doing it. It's a matter of having availability of board members.
We also talked about, you know, having just two different meetings. The first meeting being the business meeting and the second meeting. And we talked about it, we agreed to it, but it fell apart. We talked about a process where we would have board requests or agenda items. We talked about it. We implemented it with sending our request to the board president. It fell apart. We have, we have to do it intentionally. We have to immediately measure after each meeting, is it working, I guess?
Well, I think the forum you're talking about, has it, has someone used it? Has someone gone through a process of asking for something, not using that process?
I used it once so far.
I haven't used it because I haven't had something that I was interested in doing. So it doesn't mean it has to be used seventy-five times. It just has to be used when it's an important place to the person who might be doing it.
And I think the nuance though, that in absence of having clear deliverables from the board is going to create chaos. So I think there's no nice way to say that. The reality is you can ask employees to do everything under the sun. And, but if you're able to say, okay, in the next six months, this is where we're going to focus. But then you can't say on the other hand, oh, by the way, we want all these other things on the agenda. That's nothing to do with that. So all I'm saying is we have to figure out, both those things together will work together. And I think that's the intention of this work is if you guys, whatever you pick there, know what we're doing over here and we know what our priorities are, hopefully have at least a starting point. Because I think that's the piece that's missing for staff is because staff can feel sometimes, not just me, that we're being pulled in different directions. And I think that's also not fair to staff. And that's not just me. It's the result of the survey and I hear from teachers and implementations of T and some of those things that we've heard. So I think that it's true, but I think that we have to start somewhere. And I think we have to hold ourselves accountable. And I think that, but we're at a good starting point. I think we're in a good place where we can fix some of the mistakes.
We have the success of having done the budget. And that's essentially what we did. Essentially, at the beginning of the year, we said, this has got to be the priority we need to have. We have this date, a drop dead date, which we need to make sure that everything, the structural budget is within our income.
And that didn't fall off the radar.
No, no, it didn't. And it's because you were allowed and everything else came secondary to it. And I think that that piece has been done. So then the next piece is what?
Right, so what's next?
Well, that's the hope, that's when you develop the concrete plan because I would push back a little bit and choose a part. So it was done. However, because we haven't collectively decided what our priorities, then we might have three different programs in the L cap, three new different programs in this, three different programs here. But they do different things, they're opposing things that, or maybe they're doing similar things. But we haven't collectively said, hey, this is going to be the focus. And then how can we work with staff or staff let us know what their recommendation is for, hey, this program's working, we're going to keep, we want to keep this program, this, and we want to get rid of it. And then we budget accordingly. So then we would say, well, if this program is working, now let's make the calculated decision to put more resources for that program that's working and cut the program that's not. Or whatever the case may be, like having that concrete plan, I think is what, which I was mentioning. Figuring out, otherwise we're going to be in the same situation of, hey, you know what, by the way, we're going to fill the waste and special watch and let's just focus on that piece and then forget about everything else.
But you know, there's sixty-four, sixty percent on our strategic imperatives. And then there's forty percent on the business fundamentals of running the district. And part of that is the board policies that we should be reviewing and keeping up to date. So there's all, there's those, those, it's monitoring the budget, getting regular reports on, we said we're going to spend this much, but where are we here today? Where are we spending more? Where are we saving? What the FICMA report suggested is that we do that monthly so that we stay on top of the budget that we developed. So I think we've got to, we've got to take care of the business fundamentals as well as our strategic imperatives.
We should have a goal for the fundamentals as well so that we do the facilities master plan. So we know where we're going even with those operations. It's not just like, hey, you know what, by the way, this happened, so we're just going to create a new HVAC system. And then, oh, you know, we're just going to actually do something else.
Right. Right now, we don't, we do not have a, we do not have an approved budget for the capital money that we have. Everything we've done with bond is coming to a conclusion and we have extra money. Russian money is kind of frozen with what we've already approved. We have, a big three million came in in developer fees. So our strategic, our facilities master planning has got to be, I hope, a chunk of that forty percent.
So I do want to point out that, and I think you're right to point out, President Thomas, that facilities planning would be part of forty percent. I would push that the budget oversight piece is number two on your strategic initiatives or imperatives, excuse me. And so I mean, one consideration in terms of how you spend your board time is tracking with whether an item falls into one of these three categories or whether it doesn't. And if your goal, that's great to have a sixty, forty percent specific, it's concrete, measurable, it's all the smart, you know, whatever that acronym stands for. And whether it's three months or whether, you know, in a particular meeting, you might not have a sixty, forty. But over the course of a month or two or three, you should be in the sixty, forty range or you need to be thinking about how you're setting your agenda. And maybe it's that board members talk, we talk too much. Maybe it's that board members are adding items to the board agenda that per your own, you know, practice are added to the agenda and that they're not underneath one of these three things. Maybe it's that staff is presenting way too long on things they shouldn't be presenting on. You know, like they're giving you detailed reports. I mean, I have no idea, but you have to sort of, again, if you go back to the cycle and, you know, work with the superintendent and the two board members who are helping with the board meeting and however you're tracking it, whether it's reflecting the board members' feelings about it, whether it's minutes. And I think that will allow you to, again, sort of be focused and implement the overarching sort of approach.
And I think the other thing, of course, I would say this, is you have to have time to have conversations about it because it's your meeting and you are talking about how much time you spend. Nobody's going to tell you or it's not anybody's job to police the board, right? That is your work. And so you have to decide when you have information, what you're going to do about it, whether it fit your plan or not, and how individuals will make the changes the team needs to function as the team wants to function. Again, it goes back to everybody's involved, the behavioral changes that are being asked, everybody has to buy into. And it goes back to why we spend so much time talking about it? Because the only thing you control in the end is you. And so we just have to be ready to do that and show up differently if that's what's decided by the board, what the district needs to move forward in the best ways for the district. But I think there's an actual process. You have...
Okay.
And I just wanted to share what we haven't talked about, that we will later talk about. It has to be part of the conversation is how, what's the level of commitment that you will be willing to go for that, to have those conversations? Because time is really affected by our level of commitment of being ready to have these conversations and bringing that information to the board. And you'll get to that eventually.
So there's a couple of things you need to know before we go to the strategic imperatives and the process I have next. I'll start with period number one, and I want Lenny to kind of just give you an outline of what she handed out, which is our L cap dashboard foundation.
I'm proud of her. I need to.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Josh.
And we'll see him again.
Yes, he will. I hope so.
See you.
He's right up the street. You can actually turn on the tube. It's so important to me. Sending messages about how well he does.
I thought it was important that we contextualize with data. And I know you've all have seen this data and it's on, you know, it's public release. And we also have copies in the audience for folks. And essentially what you have in front of you is an equity report that really speaks to the indicators that have been released such as suspension rate, English learner progress, graduation rate, English language arts and mathematics. And behind it is just, and these are just printouts right off of the web, is by school. Because as you all know, you know, we look at initiatives that are district wide, but then we also want to allow for individual progress monitoring for individual school site, all tied also to our principals that are helping and working to get us through with their leadership teams of teachers. I, you know, this is my second year. I'm now making my first year in head services. And I have to say that I'm excited by the good work and the foundational work that's been done by teachers and principals in this district. But I also want to share and as a reminder that we are in a very new place with curriculum instruction in this district. So the readers and writers workshop, new in the sense of an uneven implementation. So I think for the first time, we're really kind of going deep in that work. So teachers are finally getting access and opportunity to get more professional development. Are we where we need to be? Not yet. But we're continuing to work through our other barriers as we were talking about, like subs, you know, and all of that. In terms of science, we just selected our pathway for science. And then at the same time, we know that there's a new adoption out in the horizon. And so we've got our SRTs that are working very diligently with classroom teachers to implement, but they don't have all of the curriculum either. And again, there's the whole cost. And so this is all part of my inventory and looking at what's the state of the state. In terms of our secondary, you know, our partnership with BaySci and Lawrence Hall of Science, they're moving a little bit more on that. And I think all led by teachers and teachers informing the work. In terms of mathematics, we are working through status quo with the materials that folks have right now. But we heard from the secondary teachers. And the secondary teacher said to us, as we start to embark on this textbook adoption process for mathematics, which is a new process for New York Unified. We have not been through a process in many, many years. One, because the state didn't have, you know, materials. But also because, you know, I like to formalize things. And so we've done a very formal process. And so folks are kind of growing within that and we're doing it. But what our secondary teacher said to us is, as we're looking at the curriculum instruction in the fall for mathematics, there was one thing that really wasn't working. That was accelerated math. And so, so we made the decision, we talked to teachers, we worked with the department, the department lead. And that did not, they did not use that this year. Because we looked at data with our teachers and we made that decision. So, but again, we're in a very new place and we have not had the opportunity and really the time to really share these progresses. So I'm just kind of throwing out little snippets and I want you all to also recognize that, as the superintendent said, we are committed to bringing all this information forward. In terms of data, what you have in front of you is really the fall dashboard. So for the first time, we now have two points, right, that we can look at the dashboard. But internally, we are finally in year two of a lot of internal data. So for the first time, we now have two years of iReady. We have other data areas such as writing. So in our, in our K six, our teachers give a premium post in three genres. I don't think you've ever really had a presentation on how kids are doing. And, but I want to give you the good news is that as we looked at illuminate, we're now migrating all of the data and we will have two years of data to share.
What's illuminate versus iReady?
So illuminate is, and I'm going to go really, so illuminate is our new information system for data, for our achievement data that we're using internally. So in the past, what our district did is that we would go on Data Quest and put it in. And as you know, Data Quest is very, very different. It's not giving you the by classroom, by child. And what we get now with illuminate is by classroom, by child. And teachers can really make informed discussion, informed decisions about how to adjust their teaching and learning in the classroom.
And that's different from iReady? What's i, I thought iReady was that?
So iReady is an actual program that give in mathematics and language arts that does a diagnostic. And it's also doing individual lessons in mathematics. So iReady was here last year. Illuminate started in the middle of the summer, in the middle of the summer. And now iReady is, excuse me, illuminate is continuing. And so we want to show you how that's going to look different moving forward. So the possibility that iReady might go away. Now we actually have a student data system in the district, which we have not had before. And so that's new for New York Unified. And I would say it's also new for all of our surrounding districts now, we have counties. So everyone kind of came on board with it. The other piece is around reading instruction and DRA. And our teachers give three times a year an assessment in fluency, this is K six, fluency, comprehension. And so we've now got two years, we now have two years of data in that area. So we can show these steps, incremental steps that our kids are making and progressing. And we don't have to wait for the fall dashboard. So I say that all, that we've now got data, we're migrating it over to illuminate and our teachers are making informed decisions as it relates to student instruction. What our next step is, and as we start to look and prioritize what we have out there is, is it meeting the needs of all of our student groups? And that's the dashboard that tells us, how are we serving students with disabilities? How are we serving English learners? How are we serving all student groups, boys and girls at our school sites? That's going to be the next question. And then also where we put our energy to move our district forward.
I think this is why we need the board to figure out like how we're moving forward in terms of the direction. Because so like if there is a readers and writers workshops, like what's the kind of big picture assessment? Is it working? If it's working, then how are we investing resources in that to make sure that it continues working? If that's our priority. our priority. If it's not our priority, then let's focus on the mathematics problem, because that's our priority. Whatever, whatever the case may be, figuring out, like, because if you have more than three priorities, you have no priority, because we're all over the place. So, we, we need to do that. The other piece is, and this is kind of new to me, in terms of this illuminate piece, thinking like, but we, we spent all this money on iReady, and if it might go away, just thinking about, that's because, again, to a plan that we didn't have a vision, we don't have a plan. So, how are we, not just the time, going back to the point of thinking about, the superintendent mentioned that, the fatigue of like, oh, I'm using iReady, okay, now I put all this time into, as a teacher, I put all this time into iReady, now you're changing to illuminate. I'm like, you know what, I'm just gonna kick back and chill until I am for sure, because next year it's gonna be, uh, eliminate is gonna be the new thing.
Eliminate.
My point is that we gotta say this is the direction, and then stick with it, because then otherwise, then I can see how, like, I'm gonna give, just listen to it, thinking about, like, how I feel, and do I learn, at this point, with my kids, am I learning iReady, or what am I doing now halfway? So.
And I think about the DRA, because I've looked at the CIPSAs, and the DRA scores are similar for every school. And I thought, how can you, how can you differentiate and learn anything from DRA if almost every school has the same percentages? So, you know, I mean, are we really looking at these things, and are they really being diagnostic for us? And how, you know, over the last several years, what are we learning about? That the use of it, and how predictive it is of student success?
And I think, to, to go back a little bit, some of the decisions that were made, you know, in the past, I think were research-based. They were. So just the DRA, so it's a nationally normed assessment, and districts use it all across the area. But then, it's like, how to use the data. So that's just a snapshot in time of how a child is reading. But then it's giving teachers a protected time to collaborate and to look at data and to assess the child, and really have an informed, then have an informed parent-teacher conference as to how a child is doing. But just saying we've got DRA, and we've had DRA for years, I don't think we actually had the discussion of, is it working? But now that we have the tool of illuminate, okay, so it's a tool, iReady's a program, but we were using it in the, as stock, yeah, until illuminate came into place. But using two years of data to really have informed discussions around, is readers and writers workshop giving us the best results for kids? Again, stored in illuminate, so that, so that our, our student, our school set councils can make decisions with their site funds, so that kids can progress. It's, it's just, if we don't use data, then it's just going on, you know, my grandmother, you know, or excuse me, my neighbor's child had X experience. And absolutely, I don't want to invalidate that experience, but unless it's rooted in data that really shows you why or why not that child did not have the experience, I, I think you just kind of start to sting with rumors and me and those. So until we really ground our discussions in data as teachers do, then we can, then make more informed work. But I do recognize that you have not really had the opportunity to have this information.
And from us, for example, I would say that we need at least, if eliminate is a recommendation, we need to figure out how, at least a three-year commitment, so that there's a cycle, because, I mean, if, again, I'm sorry, I don't wanna put it into the point, just figure out, that's, that's how, the expectation that, that together, this is how we're, how we're moving, so that even if something happens, there's some sort of thing that eliminate doesn't capture, we're like, well, we're still sticking to it because of this period.
Or fixed what's ever.
We can evaluate that afterward, but then we, we have, think so that, whether the teacher administrator, like, I do need to take the time to do this, because I know this is for the last three years, and it's not like, next year it's gonna change. So, as part of the piece of, of this, but we need to have, as the board, the discussion of kind of, what are the big picture kind of priorities? So for example, maybe we can get some guidance or help from, from staff would be, like, in terms of mapping out priorities, do you see it like, within the framework of, of the dashboard? And we don't have to use the dashboard as a framework, but that would be my preference. But within that framework, are you asking, would you ask us to be like, let's focus on one or two of these things, and that's what we go all in on, so that we, we can measure that, and we're doing that? Or are we doing, like, which is two of them, or, like, that's the kind of guidance that I guess I would ask for how to move forward in terms of the.
So I, I particularly appreciate your three years or more reference, because I think in order to do deep work, you do have to space it out. Unfortunately, we can't say, oh, we're only gonna do math and science this year, forget reading. You know, you still, teachers still have to teach reading, you still have to support teachers, new teachers coming in, but it's not so much as an emphasis in terms of perhaps dollars, right, or, or time, or use of subs, let's say, right? What I anticipate is looking at our data, and we started this discussion last year with the LCAB, is that mathematics is, is a gap for us, is, is a big gap, TK twelve. And a lot of it, as we're looking at the data, has to do with perhaps an uneven implementation of, so, so without going into all the specifics, that was, that was a gap. So what we did this year is that we knew that we had to do a textbook adoption in mathematics, plus the state was ready. But what's happening out here, behind the scenes, in the services, is that we're starting to write our three-year plan for a textbook adoption process. Because we know that our teachers need materials, okay? So although our focus is on mathematics, I've got science teachers out here who need more access to next-generation science standards. And selfishly, we're gonna get tested in two years, and we're doing, you know, we have to get our, our kids ready for all of that. So, what I, but I will know that the superintendent's gonna take us through an activity where there's gonna be some high-leverage, next-six-months work that should be an expectation of staff, and that we have to deal with the district. But what I ask and appreciate around this, around the three-year plan, is that we're gonna cycle through, because some of these pieces, it's gonna take two years to do, or it's gonna take three years to do. But what I hear you saying is that you want more transparency as to what's the plan. For us, it's also bandwidth. So, there's three of us in my department that do this work, right? But at the same time, we've got all these other compliances from the state and the federal government that still continue. So, when we get direction as to where our attention span should be focused, that's where we will put the commitment of resources and time for staff. There's still gonna be other things that have to happen. We still have to do the reports to the Office for Civil Rights. We still have to do the upload on, you know, for C-beds and all of this other stuff. That still has to happen. But I think in terms of what we bring forward to the board, and how we put more time and money and bring forward to, to the board and the public, that's what we're looking at for direction. Right now, I'm under data. So right now, it's mathematics. We see that commitment for this year, and start to roll out the data. We know that our data also tells us that students with disabilities or English learners in some, in some school sites are not, we're not getting really trained, and everything. So, how do we do that work? And it's in both English language arts, and it's in mathematics. So, although I'm saying it's math, and it's what we're doing, please know that we still, you still have to teach reading, you still have to teach science. And so, we're gonna have to look at a, a three-year plan that, that rules that out.
But that's a part of the two. I wouldn't say that, for strategic comparative one, I would look at the dashboard as a place to start the monitoring at the board level. So what's going on with the red and, and the orange, or the, is it, well?
Red, orange, yellow.
Red, orange, yellow, what's going on there? That's a good place to frame it, because the dashboard's the ultimate metric that we're gonna be answering to anyway. Might as well, frame it under that kind of structure, because that fits LCAB and CIPSAs, so it all aligns. So, in, in the sense of, from a board perspective, yes, that's, that's where I would say, from there, we go deeper, but I think that's a story.
And I guess we, I would like some guidance when we, so, from an audit perspective, all of us here, could we be like, okay, we wanna be blue in all of that. Right? So.
You should.
But, but as a framework, or as a piece of how do we power this, so, what I, from my understanding, would be some guidance would be like, okay, so, can we agree that, like, we're gonna focus on English language arts, just to kind of quickly, let's say people are struggling more, or students are struggling more in English, English language arts as a whole, and with schools, right? So, we're gonna focus on that, let's get to green within the next two years, or blue, or whatever, and then that's our focus. Knowing that we still have to do the other things, but then with the emphasis on English language arts, using this as an example, it can be math, it's more of focusing on that, I guess, that's the kind of guidance that I feel like would be helpful from your perspective of, like, this is how we can get to green, and it's like, we need to do reinvent, or not reinvent, uh, reinvest in readers and writers workshop, because it's been working. So this is how we're taking to the next level to ship.
I mean, if we've made that commitment to readers and writers workshop, and it's not an adopted curriculum at the state level, but we really believe in it, how are we making sure that it is working for our kids?
So we're gonna go to that, so that's on strategic period number one, which is actuarial performance of Brian, and do a brief preload on number two, and then we'll get into the activity.
So, the strategic period two, so much has focused on getting the budget back and balance. Of course, we spent the majority of the first half of the school year getting from where we had to be, where, getting from where we were, where we had to be, in order to get the county to improve particularly for. So, the lion's share of the hard part of the work with regard to balancing the budget has now been done. Now, that doesn't mean that we've waited magic long and everything's perfect. Now, the budget plan, we still have a lot of challenges that are coming down the pike as we deal with the continued pressure from stirs and purs. The fact that we're just beginning to grow again, which is going to be, which is gonna create a new set of challenges as we go into budget development, as far as how do we regrow at an appropriate pace to only match how many students we're gaining, as opposed to perhaps getting like a runaway horse and getting ahead. We also have the remainder of the recommendations from the fiscal crisis and management assistance team that came in with the things last school year. We've begun implementing many of the items that were part of that, because a big focus of what their report was about was what we had to do to get the budget back and balance. We still have some ongoing monitoring things. We actually have new reports that are coming to the board at the next board meeting, because the next board meeting is a business meeting, on February the sixth, that are gonna have some new reports for activity through December, as well as a monthly activity status report. So you'll have one sort of overall report through December, and then six monthly reports that'll be underneath it, just to catch us up. And then from there on out, we'll have a, a year-to-date, and then adjust the most recent month set that we'll be part of. And so, Kim and I have been testing out different formats, and looking at different things that we can produce out of the system. We think we've landed on one that will be at a high enough level to let the board be able to look at it and ask questions. We, we wanna kind of test run December to give you an opportunity to let us know if you feel like you need more detail, if you, you don't think there's enough information. So that's gonna be coming at our next board meeting.
Will you be, will you be, because this year, the, the cuts we did were for next year. But this year, we made a lot of cuts going into the year. And, you know, that's the kind of monitoring I'm wondering about. Are, are we monitoring all those cuts that we made for this year to make sure that, that we're following what we said we would save?
Yes, broadly. But, I mean, the overwhelming majority of those were positions that did not go forward to position control, or that were removed from position control on adoption of budget. So, because the timing of those.
Yeah, and those are the big-ticket items. But, but even the, the smaller items, it kind of speaks to the culture of monitoring what we said we're gonna do and making sure we do it, even if it's something as simple or small, relatively small as overtime. You know I'm getting it?
Yes. So, we're, we're gonna have our first set of those reports, and we'll see whether or not it's at the level of detail the board would like, or if there's additional information, like, we'll make adjustments going forward. And the plan is to start bringing something monthly, and then on the months that, that coincide with an interim report, they'll come together with the interim report, so that you'll see them all together. So, we're, we're marching forward on that one. A couple of the other key items had to do with.
My thoughts will, on the piece of more or less detailed, I would, from my perspective, and we give others more numbers, would be figuring out in a way that's presentable to the community. If it's, if it's more detailed, that we need the information, I feel like we can dive and get into it. But from my perspective, I would, because it's, I would say that make it as accessible as possible to the broader community, so it's not like code seven nine six four three two.
Oh, exactly.
Well, there's the eleven-page version, and the, the one thousand nine hundred and four-page version. We're going with the eleven-page version. If we, if we decide we need more detail, then, then of course, we can get there later. But this, this is going to be a very high-level report to the highest level of, like, how sex is high level with regard to the, what you're used to seeing. But it will have two complements, two of the things that happen this month complement versus a.
As you're saying, if I remember the community, I'm not lost the first time.
It's not more detailed than that at this point, unless you ask us to drill down to a higher level.
I'm not gonna use that many.
So, but, but we were trying to, I mean, the board, certain board members have expressed requests for this multiple times since the original ThinkMy recommendations came out. And so we've been in the business office trying to test out different reports to see what could, would and wouldn't work, as far as for a board attachment. And so we, we landed on a couple of reports that we think may hit that spot, and we wanna test them out, so we're running a test run in December. The couple of the other items had to do with my department's professional development. CASBO Northern Section, last school year and this school year now, has had their Professional Development Institute in Newark, which is like, really convenient, because it keeps our costs way down by getting staff development. So this Friday, the business office will actually be closed, because everyone in the business office is going to their strand of the Northern Section Professional Development Institute this year. We, we had, the majority of the staff went last year, this year, everybody's going. Additionally, we sent several additional people to escape training this year, and we're hoping to do that again next year. That's in Sacramento. But it's, lets them really drill down into a lot more of what our software can do, and how we're able to determine some additional reports, which we can work on for the board. And I'll stop there.
Yeah. Let me summarize. The big thing that I feel around the budget is, we need a progress monitor closely enough so we don't slide back into that. So we need to keep an eye on the big-ticket items as they're going through the system. The staff, this is recommendations for figuring out, needs more cross-training so they can be interchangeable, so if one person's gone, it doesn't stop the whole system from employing. Those are the big areas. And I think the other piece is really just, you know, continuing, especially with the budget, making sure that everything's in the packet before it goes to print, or before it gets in the queue. And if it's late, you may not be below the packet. So we're gonna, this part for the board purposes is, how do we make sure that we keep this financial stability we worked so hard to get to, and not let us slide back? So we're gonna do a brainstorming activity, because I know the brain curling endure, how hard the chair is. So I'm gonna put some music on, I'm gonna pull back the, the veil there. And what I'd like you to do for this brainstorming activity is, first of all, take your time, look at each poster, and then if there's something that we forgot, or that you forgot, or you think should be on there, write it on the sticky and just put it on there. There's no wrong answers. We're gonna come back, the next, the next round's gonna be prioritizing. But I wanna exhaust about twenty minutes on brainstorming. If we don't need all that time, that's okay. But no, comfortably with twenty minutes, I'll put some music on. You have sticky notes there, react each of the posters. There's two posters for comparative one, because there's a lot underneath that. There's one for, uh, comparative two, which is around budget, three, which is around increasing enrollment. And the fourth area, which is not a comparative, but this is kind of the board structure ideas, that's the fourth one. So, you can tell me, pull those now, I'll put the music on.
Patrick, can I ask a clarify question?
Sure.
Where did all those little things come from, those ideas?
That's a great question. Largely, those are things that we have been asked to do pretty much since July one, of when I started this role, July one of twenty fifteen. And it's not too separate, the ratings, some of it came from board retreats back early on, some of it from recent board retreats, some of it came from a survey with the community and staff, and input sessions. So, there won't be a lot of surprises on there, but I think there might be other things we need to add. But the, the last place you saw some of these were at, I think it was two retreats ago, when we were at Aloney. I think when we did the vision and mission setting, these are some of the brainstorming we came up with. So I'm bringing them back, and we're gonna add more to it. I've added some pieces to it, and I'd like you to take one more round. Anything else you think of?
But we're, we're not, we're not evaluating what's there, we're just adding.
Adding to it.
So these are the lists of good ideas, all the good ideas.
These are the list of good ideas, and just ideas we've had. So let's add to it on the first round, and then the next two rounds we'll do is power voting. And I'll explain that, I'll use that. Let's, I'll put the music on, any requests for music? Let's, I'll put music on, any requests for music? Welcome back, welcome back. And uh, please know that this is not the final version of anything. This is a starting point for us for the draft. So don't feel like, oh, I should have thought of that, it's never even on there now. We've got time, but this at least gets us started with the work. So just know that this is going to be a living document for a while. But I do want to move to the next phase and I am going to have you guys vote. Uh, and there's color coding to the voting that's going to occur. If it's something you want to see done in the next six months, put a red dot by it. If you want to see something completed or priority in the next 12 months, put a green dot by it. And I'll leave this up while you're voting. Or if it's an 18-month action item, um, code it with the blue dot. And what all we'll do next is we'll put it into a sort based on those colors. And then we'll begin trying to work to put more metrics around it and what can that really mean and flush that out a little bit more. But at least it gets us a starting point to start figuring out what are we doing? And then I know that Francisco and Nancy and I are starting looking at how do we map out board meetings? And are we going to take it with some of the structures here? But even within the structures, I think it'd be helpful for you guys to kind of give us an indication with your dots what's important. But um, I was going to do it piece by piece, but I was going to give all the dots. You guys can look at the protocol.
Do we have own to dots?
No.
I was just going to ask that, do they have to do one dot per imperative? Can they pick one imperative and dump out?
You have five of each color.
And they can go anywhere, anywhere.
Anywhere you want. They get, all five could go on one in red if you want, or you could hold one for each category. You have five of each color.
So what do we do, are you going to, with the, I was reading, there's like six or seven that are similar? And it's like, well, I like them also, I, I mean, ahead of these, whichever one is, I like.
We'll collapse, we can collapse those in the next version. What, what, what this process is really going to show is where there's agreement and where there's disagreement, which means more conversations is down. So I would say pick the one that is the most important in six months. It's not a perfect process, but you will see in the data at a glance when it's over, like where there's a lot of agreement and that's a good place to start.
And as an outsider, I, I appreciate, Pat, you started with, um, this isn't a perfect process. I mean, there are so many things up there and getting to agreement. I mean, it, it'll be interesting to see where dots land, but I think it's important to remember that this is the very beginning of a conversation around getting to a focus. And that part of what you have to be is diligent in holding yourself to getting to focus points. And really allowing each one of you to be independent thinkers and learners and processors. You're all in different places with different perspectives. It's okay that you all need different information, different data, different visuals. Some people probably get the financials really quickly. Other people need it in a much simpler format because that's not just how they roll. I mean, we all see the world differently. That's an asset to the governance team, so build on that and get on, I guess.
Can we open our envelope?
You can open your envelope, you can vote.
It's like the Grammys.
And then. I did make a prediction, but I'll share it with you after.
So this is.
You made a prediction.
We do, we don't just do red to begin with and come out.
However you want, you vote wherever you want.
But I mean, it's not like.
But the color coding will tell you how we're going to sort that.
All in one round.
All the blue, we want category underneath that.
Next time.
He was originally going to do a different round, but right now we're just going to put it together.
Okay.
You put them all at the once.
We're collecting.
Yeah. And I've asked, uh, Letty and Brian and Shar also to chime in as well.
And then you're confusing that with the dashboard colors now, you know, blue is good, green is.
I know. At one point it was emojis, but it was really just not a good point. Okay, while music, I'll put more music on.
I feel like old Facebook teacher.
But you see some patterns already come up, um, but it's a starting point. It's not a finished product. We'll compile it and put it into a better grid for you guys. We're not going to throw anything out yet. We'll leave everything on the sheet, even if it's not, uh, we'll put up the dotted ones above the line, I guess. So that'll give us a starting point and then uh, we had our break. But I want to turn it back over to who, Supodo or you?
Well, and in the, um, knowing what time it is on the evening and knowing that today is just, well, Tuesday. So we're, these are the types of conversations we'll continue to have. Um, one about what you have to do to feel effective and competent in your board meetings. And I think they'll come up naturally as you start to do many of these, like how are these influencing what you think a good meeting is and should be, right? And this will begin to contribute to that. And you've begun discussions about how you're going to measure that, when you're going to measure that. Maybe there's a little um sheet of questions you ask yourself at the end of every meeting and somebody's tallying how that goes, just to look at your own data over time. But as Patrick said, this really is the beginning of much more important work. And one of the hard things for us is what we need is time. And so really thinking about, and you have options, right? You have the option of making this part of your regular meetings. Uh, I know that you've taken the strategy of having an hour before your regularly scheduled meeting and because people put that night aside, that might work for people. I don't know what works for you, uh, but I do know that the more everybody's in the room together having these types of conversations, the smoother it all goes. You go slow to go fast. And I know it can be frustrating, but the idea is, and even speaking with people, you know, in the, in the audience, you want to make commitments that people can believe in, invest in over time and know that next year, next board member, next principal, it's still the course, it's still what's important to this community. And they can truly invest their professional integrity in getting to be good at it, right? And so really, what we need from you is commitments about when we meet next. And it doesn't necessarily, we can certainly come back, we don't have to come back. We can intermittently come back and check on you and, you know, progress over time, just like you evaluate other things. We've heard now a lot about what matters to you and the types of values you have. And as you start to kind of ferret out, particularly this one, your board meeting structures, we can tell you what we see over time, you can measure yourselves. And then kind of if there's points in how do we get to focus through all of this, we can certainly help again facilitate conversations. And hopefully, as you've seen, we don't have a right answer for you. We believe you have a right answer for you. And we'll just keep processing you through to make sure when you select an answer, you hold yourself to it and you're really thinking about how are you measuring that? All the things you've said, you really want to do anyway. So I don't know kind of how, Pat, you want to get to when everybody's marking in their calendar what comes next.
You guys want to send them to Shar?
Well, and it's fair, everybody has a life, everybody has.
I mean, one of the things that since we, I don't know, I guess I don't know if the agenda has been changed for the next, if we're doing business on the sixth, for the 20th, blocking out um a four-hour block to kind of map this out um as part of the conversation because before we get.
A four-hour block?
That's what we do for here.
Full hour.
That's what we do for this.
On the 20th of February?
I mean, whatever, yeah, I'm okay with that.
I've just tried it, I just wasn't.
Oh, we work in Newark, we're working there.
This is a four-hour.
There'll be nothing else in the meeting with this, right?
Well, that, I think that could be part of our.
Two-hour block, that's what I mean, it just.
Yeah, two-hour. I mean, that's kind of what she was saying is this idea of how are you checking along the way? And then when are you going deep and where and when do you need these guys to come and support? But I, what I'm hearing is can, because how do we, so what I'm hearing is can we pair that with the second meeting of the month and put it in a workshop and then?
Make it two hours at least.
At least two hours and then um we'll look for other dates as we go forward for deeper. I was thinking the end of March might be the next deeper one, maybe it's Saturday.
What else do we have to have the workshop then? We've got the facilities.
Thing that's, that's coming up in one or two, so you have to be careful.
Right.
About if we're going to take time on, on the third, Tuesday of the month.
Well, and whoever the two are that are helping with the agendas, I mean, you guys will have to, you have to sit down.
I mean, we have a Russian, because one of the pieces that I've brought, pushing back on this year, just so you know, is not to do weekends, I mean, if I have to do, because that's with work and this, like, that's sacred for my family.
Why do?
And it's, not that, but, but I would, uh, could do one, but it, it'd have to be like, we're diving into like, this is what we're doing next time, so it's not.
No more conversation.
You want, you want.
It is conversation, it is, it is, it is conversation, it's just more of like.
I made a mental note.
If it's, I'm gearing up a weekend, like, my kids, like, to me, that's the only way. And it has to be a one-off because, because everyone is, is sacrificing another one.
Well, and having these pieces together, your L cap and this together, so that, and you started to that conversation early on, not these two documents, but either these two documents.
And you talked about that too, Nancy, like the relationship between it all, right? Everything's not separate and apart, but really makes sense to you? And then how you can help it makes sense to everybody else, your community, your staff, all of that.
But we have been, and I think maybe that's kind of really the word, I think there's agreement is, what I'm hearing is let's keep going forward with this idea of first meeting of the month is more business-focused, second meeting workshop, staff reports. So that gives us some latitude to, to work on that. And then if we, if we need more time, we can get more time, but let's, we'll start with that at least.
Can I ask you a verified question?
Yes.
Staff reports from the business department, first meeting and the second meeting.
Both. Just because, yeah, we've got, well, I don't know, I think that's part of.
Before the meetings, if we can have things that you want us to think about. So for example, if this, if there's a, there's now a lot of stuff. So if it's the kind of thing that we can come prepared, having done some of this, and then you're talking about 10, 15 minutes, we don't have to go through the process because we've got it.
And some of that I could do with you guys on my, on a one-on-ones.
Well, you know, I think it's, yeah.
It's collective information, um, but I agree.
The one thing, just, I'm just going to put out there, the one thing about homework is everybody would have to agree with you because it doesn't actually save us time. If two people did it and two people didn't and one person never even saw it. And I'm not saying that that happens, here, I'm just saying it happens in the universe.
Yes.
And so.
That's true.
Because otherwise, you know, it can be a waste of time on the other end because somebody's doing it twice.
Could I ask a question? You, you've worked with other districts. Have you seen other districts be more efficient because they had uh board committees, like a finance committee that would sit down with the finance director and, and, um, you know, two members and they could bring back their perspective?
I think it all matters kind of on what the culture is here. Whatever that is that still works for staff, and sometimes it's double work for staff because a minority of the board cannot make any actual decisions. And in something as important, as example of finances, two board members knowing the details isn't enough, right? Everybody has to understand that. So it's a give and a take, but there might be things that actually meeting with a small room could save the business office time because they get some direction and everything's not brand new to the whole board. So you have to decide for you, here in Newark, does that make sense, knowing the culture of your board and the other pressures on staff in terms of time? Sometimes they're great, sometimes they're just a second set of work.
I was thinking of it in terms of saving money, my money, saving time at our regular meetings. But, but I don't, I don't know, you know, I'm just.
There might be things where that's appropriate. Again, I think the, that's why you have to have discussions as a board. Someone would have to say, I'm okay with not understanding those details. I'm going to leave it to you two and I'll catch up on the budget in a year where you've had significant decisions to be made. So if people are willing to forego knowing that level of information, again, it has to resonate with all five of you that that's appropriate and would move the district forward.
And I would just suggest to kind of put, to close this out, I think, because there's not five board members here, I would suggest that we go forward with just the, the first meeting being business, second one having these workshops. Let us map some of it out. And the only other thing I would suggest to add is to the agenda for the agenda setting, agenda, if we could add a good 10 minutes, 15 minutes at the beginning, and I know the three of us are going to be working on agendas, just to debrief the last board meeting and what we saw went well, what didn't go well. I think that would help us as well to move forward on this.
Yeah, but let's not look at the last board meeting, that, that was a, that was an anomaly, I hope.
Well, my point is, well, my point is if we, we'll get better at it, that's all.
I know, I agree, I just.
Well, I mean, when I have agreements on what's good and what's bad, I mean, you might all have very different ideals on what makes a good board meeting and that's part of.
No, I agree, I agree with doing that, I'm just making a comment about the last meeting wasn't.
It'll help us do better this week. I think that, I think that captures it and then I'll, we'll, we'll map it out.
So some of the questions we could think about would be like, did the meeting, um, us stay till, like, did that help us get to green um in any of these areas? If the answer is no, then that means we weren't working on the.
And there's, I mean, we always have to ask ourselves about efficient and effective, right? It might be more efficient to stay late, it might not be more effective, right? And so, I mean, the human brain can only, we can only do so much, all of us.
And this is sort of a caveat too, because we're talking about two meetings doing different things. Our 70% or 60% of one meeting, you're talking about a combination of the two meetings. So you have to be a little bit more flexible in terms of what you consider. In other words, if we're spending workshop time and that time is spent on one of our imperatives, then that's 50% right there of that, of that month's meeting. And so if we have to spend more time on running the school district 101, we do that.
Oh, yeah.
And I think what's going to happen with time is the more you are focused and clear, you will be, your time adjustments will change. Right now, you're putting in extra time to get those processes in place. And so once you come to agreement as a team of five and you're moving in the same direction and you have your framework and you're collecting data and monitoring work, you will become a more efficient board. And so the time that you're doing, you're, you're putting time in the backend in order to have more and better effective meetings in the backend, so that you will be more productive.
I think what we need to help from you guys in terms of supporting us would be um the process. So like, because, um, you know, I tend to learn certain processes, but then I realize that, that sometimes the process depends on how um three people want to move forward in that particular instance, even though the process has been something else. So figuring out that we all stick to that process, whatever the process is, that we, we hold ourselves accountable and say, hey, you know what, we agreed that we were going to do this. If we open it up now, then we're going to, we're going to change it and just be on that.
And that's hardest to do. You come to agreement, that's when you become efficient, right? And anything that you.
A governance team.
You become a team and that's important.
By the way, I'd like to thank Pat and staff for putting this together in, in a really visual and coherent way. I think we did good work tonight.
They took a team, we all did it. We all had it safe. I know, I hate to use, you have 15 minutes to yourself to do what you want.
I'd like you to move that adjourned. Is there a second to that?
I will second.
Meeting adjourned.
Oh, thank you.
Good job.